Good evening and welcome to the special school committee meeting this evening, Thursday, December 17th. This meeting is being recorded for LCTV, is aired live and being livestreamed on LongMeadow.org. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Long Meadows School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadows School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadows community. As you know, we're here this evening to interview the finalist candidates for the superintendent position. We received word from Ms. Catherine Minahan yesterday at, I believe, 6:30, that she has withdrawn from consideration for personal reasons. So this evening, we will be interviewing the two candidates that remain, that the search committee brought forward, beginning with Dr. Neil Guile. So...
No tripping.
Just watch your step.
That'd be the grand entrance.
So, good evening, welcome.
Yes, thank you so much. Just one quick moment. I know at my interview on Saturday, I gave just some documents and I wanted to make sure everybody on the committee had access to those as well. Pardon me for that.
All right, so, Dr. Val, each one of us has submitted two questions for interviewing purposes, and we're going to take turns, and at the end, there'll be one final question. So a total of 15 questions, and then an opportunity for you to ask questions of us, whether individually or to the committee as a whole. Okay? So, I believe that I have the first question, which is, as a superintendent, how would you delegate authority while maintaining accountability? And if you could provide an example from your current position?
That's a great question. I think, in terms of delegation, I look at the tasks, task at hand, and you have to recognize who your support staffs are to then, to delegate to. Okay, so I think, in my role as superintendent, you look at the hierarchy, so to speak, being, you know, one of superintendent, and then trickling down to assistant soup of curriculum and design, to the business manager, and then pupil services, and then that trickles down a little further to the principals. And it's within that hierarchy that you work through those tasks to identify who should be in charge of working through those challenges, or whatever it may be. In terms of accountability in that regard, I think we do a lot in the area of goal development. What do I mean by that? Working with everyone to establish clear goals, goals that are measurable in nature, that specifically speak to the task at hand. So when I think of examples, what comes up first and foremost is the work we've done in the area of response intervention. I would say that over the last two years, we spent a lot of time working with staff in that area, specifically recognizing that this is a monumental experience, rolling this out. We have decided that a lot of the responsibility for addressing the meetings, the scheduling of meetings, the organizing of the data, should fall to certain parties in the building. In my situation, that's the literacy coach. That's pretty consistent, by the way, amongst the three elementary schools. But the point being, in the spirit of delegation, is, you know, the literacy coach has a lot of responsibility there. And we specifically draft goals that are focused on accomplishing goals in terms of rolling out RTI. So, you know, one goal might be to successfully facilitate those RTI meetings that do occur regularly.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm next. What is your view of technology and innovation in the classroom? And can you cite specific examples from your previous experience that lend itself to greater technological engagement in the classroom? And do you feel that technology use in the classroom leads to better learning outcomes?
Okay.
And I can go back through that if you want.
Yeah, I may ask that in a moment.
That's fine.
Can I break that down?
Yeah, of course.
So, in terms of what role is, we are in the 21st century technological age. Technology, it's uncommon if we don't have technology. So I think we have to approach things with the understanding that technology is evolving daily. And so what are we going to do as a school system to embrace technology in the classroom? So, it has a critical role in determining the success of our students, I think. Primarily, it's a, I would say it's a tool. It's a vehicle for students in the classroom to access many different resources. In addition to it being a tool for accessibility, you have to recognize that students, it's a medium as well, for students to showcase their talents beyond just the norm, the traditional model of traditional learning. So, there's that piece, that point. The other, just thinking long-term and specific to our strategic goals, is we do need to have that critical conversation about what role technology is going to have in our classrooms. I think I hit it all.
Just let me finish. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
So, at the elementary level, we face overcrowding, possibly, at our schools. We have just been through a not-so-pleasant redistricting process. We currently, we are currently watching elementary and middle school enrollments. The question is, do you have any experience with redistricting, but I've kind of altered a little bit to say, how would you handle watching ongoing enrollment issues in the future?
How would I watch?
Yeah, how would you handle watching the ongoing enrollment issues? Because we, I mean, being in the district, you know, our situation with the middle schools, I mean, with the elementary schools, and I feel that we have some enrollment issues at the middle schools that we're watching as well, and I just am wondering how you would go about watching and kind of being aware and dealing with that.
Well, we obviously, we have certain census data to go on, to analyze. I think as, as the year, I say the years go by, I mean, we have the ability to recognize certain patterns in our enrollment numbers. And every year, I will say, is part of the budget planning process, we do look critically at the enrollment numbers because we value class size. So, in that spirit, I think we check it regularly. I would continue to check it regularly to make sure we are providing the students with the optimal learning environment. Again, that data comes to us, it's about really looking at each school from an enrollment perspective. I think with the redistricting, currently, we are at a pretty consistent class size, and I also think we are constantly gauging that and monitoring that. I don't see that going away, that's such an integral part of the budget process, and we have to have those conversations.
Okay. From what capacity, as either a teacher...
Get some money in the budget for the A B.
So, anyway, in any capacity, as a teacher, or administrator, or district level, what sort of unique, or creative, or inspired, out-of-the-box type of idea did you implement and see any results? And on to that, have you been involved with any new or different education reforms that have helped students achieve? So, first one, out-of-the-box, creative thinking that you implemented and saw results? And second, have you been involved with any new or different educational reforms?
I think out-of-the-box thinking, I look at, I guess it would be about three years ago now, when we were exploring ways in which we could figure out how to provide the students with accessibility, exposure to technology, and also, at the same time, provide teachers with opportunities to collaborate. So, I would say the out-of-the-box thinking came collaboratively amongst the admin team when we looked to bring onboard technology integration specialists, specifically to support the students. You know, it was on the, well, it was really beyond the eve, it was in the middle of the iPad explosion, if you will, and I think we recognized that technology was speeding up quite quickly, and we wanted to address that, and this was a great way to do that. I also think, in addition to that, what has happened is, in the spirit of innovation, you have other teachers who are motivated by that. I think specifically of library and media, where it's no longer becoming the traditional library, check-in-a-book, check-out-a-book experience. And they're really doing a great job at looking at how we can make that library time, that library experience, one that supports what's going on in the classroom, and is really enhancing the learning. And that's through, you know, we have anything from Lego Robotics to Makey Makeys, which I know are being rolled out. Those are really innovative, out-of-the-box ideas that I can say I've been part of, and I've been associated with a thought process in terms of rolling those out. You know, the new ed reform, different ed reform initiatives, that's an interesting question as well. I would have to say, in the spirit of initiatives, whether it was new, cutting-edge, or old, I understand this could be argued, but I look at what we've done over the last couple of years with response intervention. I know it's been around for a little while, but in the spirit of initiatives, and truly looking at the needs of our learners, that's a wonderful example of how we have changed practice. Just in the short time that I've been here, what you've seen is, in my opinion, quite remarkable, meaning you have, through this systematic approach to teaching and learning, gone, provided students with explicit instruction, opportunities for students to really be engaged in learning that's at their level. You know, that's at the tier-one, that in-the-classroom experience. You know, what you see now is small groups being engaged by the teacher. That is developmentally appropriate, it's addressing all needs. And then, looking at tier-two, you have teams working with students, providing them with explicit instruction to support their needs. And their needs are unique in nature, and I give the district, myself, staff, a lot of credit for rolling out that initiative successfully.
Hello, Principal Guile, Russell D. Gray. Based upon your knowledge of our school system, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing our special education program? And what steps would you take to address the challenge?
I think the biggest challenge has to be continuing to provide all learners with, I'd say, access to the curriculum within the classroom experience, that tier-one, as I just got done referencing. If you look at our data, the MCAS data in particular, you know, we continue to see that our achievement gap is there. Now, that being said, I would say, over the last couple of years, and this is in the spirit of what would I propose we do about that, I feel like a lot of it is already in place, meaning, you know, we have taken specific steps to address those areas. You look at school improvement plans, they specifically target those areas, that area in particular, meaning closing the achievement gap. We do that, and best practice tells us it's done in multiple ways, but primarily, you have to look at the classroom instruction component. As I referenced earlier, if you look at what we've done over the last couple of years in terms of really making a shift from a whole group model, to breaking it down to individual, to small-group instruction, that's critical in that process. We know that students, when they receive that explicit instruction, that they're more apt to get that. And then, what's critical is being persistent. So putting in a systematic approach, using data to closely monitor that. And that begins at the classroom. So, we are strategically assessing our students based on a series of assessments, standardized and organically generated, our homegrown assessments, if you will, to identify those specific areas of need. So, I think we need to refine that. I think if you look at the MCAS data, you see improvements. It's interesting, I mean, the data almost parallels itself in terms of the achievement gap. So that tells me, instructionally, we're doing the right things, but we now need to dig a little deeper in the area of special ed, and it's about instruction. It has to do with time on learning as well. We instituted win blocks. It feels like two years ago, it might have been last year, but through that implementation of the win block, the what-I-need block, we've been able to supplement the learning block. So students are getting, in theory, a double, potentially in some situations, a triple dose of learning, which that is, that's a strategy known to work in the spirit of closing the achievement gap. That being said, we have a very tight schedule, academic schedule. I think we have to look at that critically in terms of time on learning. If we know time on learning has a direct impact to how students perform, I think we owe it to the students to open that discussion up, and to really look at how we can extend time on learning. Thank you.
Good evening. What actions will you take to ensure that building principals are effectively mentoring and supervising their classroom teachers?
It's a great question and a passion of mine. If you, just to speak generally for a moment, when you look at where we are as a society in terms of public ed, you have to recognize the, I say borderline crisis on our hands in terms of the number of teachers that leave the profession within the first five years. It's upwards of 50 percent. So I truly appreciate that question. Near and dear to my heart is that whole notion of mentoring. So, my, in terms of actionables, what I really look to develop, and this is where I get really excited, is developing professional development experiences for not only the teachers, but the principals, to really look at what practices, best practices are out there for supporting teachers. I just spent the last year working at the national level, becoming nationally certified in the area of mentoring. Now, that mentoring was primarily working with principals, but what it's steeped in is good practice, anything from building culture and climate to using data as effective, as an effective tool for driving instruction. Those common, or those, excuse me, those pillars, if you will, are common at the teacher level. So, really, first and foremost, the first action is to work with the principals on those effective strategies. How are we going to support the teachers? You know, something that really sticks out in my mind is, how do we build those relationships with teachers, the new teachers in particular, so that they feel that they're invested in this experience? So that would be one of those, one of those areas that we would be exploring to better support our teachers. So it really does trickle down, in my mind. So providing that professional growth, like we provide for teachers, we would be providing that for the principals as well, in the area of mentoring.
Do you have some specific things you would do? Like visitation to classrooms, sending them to conferences, specifics?
Well, if we're talking, yeah, maybe I misunderstood the question, but when you say it that way, I mean, ultimately, the principals are responsible for their buildings and need to be in those classrooms to be monitoring what's going on. I still think, when we talk about actionables, the principal is responsible for building that relationship, that trusting relationship with that teacher or the teachers. And one of the ways in which you do that is by bringing teachers together in the collaborative spirit, so regularly meeting with that cohort of teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Please describe what you believe the perfect classroom looks like at each of our three levels, elementary, middle, and high school.
Well, all three have to be, I'd say nurturing, we have to be supportive. So I would say, looking K-12, there's got to be that common theme that addresses the social-emotional component to our learners. And I just think if we can create those welcoming environments that give the students a sense of, I say peace, almost, you know, they feel safe, they feel secure. So there's something to be said about the physical space, you know, across the board. So I would want that to be a focal point, K-12. At the elementary level, for me, it's about those, identifying the different learning spaces within the classroom, spaces where kids can go to meet, whether it's whole group, or individually, or in small group. There's got to be those opportunities for students to engage in different pro-social dynamics. Those pro-social dynamics are infused into the academics, whether that's reading, writing, math, science, social studies. But you have a space that indeed supports that.
And maybe just to make the question easier, with kids in the room, so if you were doing observations and you were walking into a classroom, what would you like to see the kids doing, and just to make sure that you...
Okay.
Not just the space itself, but...
No, that's a great ques... It's, again, at the elementary level, so there's opportunities for students to engage in dialogue. Kids are, you know, we look at the work-board stations where kids are engaged in meaningful learning that is specific to the objectives going on in that day. You have kids working at the back table on a project, you have the teacher working at the kidney table with a small group. Kids are working independently, right? And it's all task-oriented, focused on specific standards. At the middle school, it's being more departmentalized, you're still looking for opportunities for learners to engage in meaningful dialogue, where kids are able to move about the physical space and to have opportunities to think critically about the learning going on. And then, at the high school, more of the same, elaborating on those learning experiences that are meaningful and authentic to them.
Thank you.
How would you plan to raise the performance of each of the three levels of students in our district? Those who are low-achieving, those who are in the middle, and those who are high-performing students?
Well, I think it goes back to what I talked about earlier, is what system in establishing that systematic approach to academic achievement, achievement. I think we have to have a collection of data that clearly speaks to the needs of our learners. our learners, whether they're low, middle, high. You have to rely on that data. And then it's about a, meeting those students where they are currently at. That is in the spirit of differentiation and where we need to be going. I think we already do a really good job at that. I would say, too, when you look at the classroom instruction, you have to, you have to continue to provide teachers with professional development to explore those differentiated strategies that work for all types of learners. We have to, we have to do a better job, too, I think, at using our own data points, our locally-generated assessments, to really guide the classroom component. And it's through, it's through that analysis of data that I think you're able to then identify what strategies or what areas we need to focus on. I think of for, just because we've been working on this so hard at the elementary level in particular, I think when you look at the win block, we recognize that it's more than just working with or identifying the students who are struggling. We also have an obligation and a responsibility to work with the middle and the high as well. But that goes back to that whole idea of, of differentiation and giving teachers the tools that they need to be able to provide them with those experiences that are at their level. That's project-based learning, that's, you talk about innovation, using the technology at our disposal to, to engage students in independent projects, stuff of that nature. We need to continue to explore.
Thank you.
Okay, another multi-part long question.
Why would we expect anything different?
Why not, right? As superintendent, you would be the public face of the district, and as such, the voice of the district in many ways. What type of communication would you utilize when speaking with various stakeholders, whether they're parents, community members, without school-aged children, other elected or town officials, the school committee, and district employees from the admin team all the way down to support staff? And could you please cite some examples, specific examples, that you have utilized, you know, in the past?
I am a face-to-face person, meaning I, I, there's something to be said about meeting with people face-to-face. I can't say enough about that. That being said, we have a, a bevy of vehicle or tools to, to communicate from social media. I mean, pick your, pick your platform, I would say, whether it's, that's Facebook or Alert Now's or Twitter. I think the best approach is to look at the type of communication, or what is the goal of that, of that, that communication? And recognize what's going to best meet the needs of all parties, I would, I would say. And then from there, you make those decisions. I, I think, you know, daily communication tends to go through emails. I think that's an effective tool, the primary tool, frankly. I, I just think, when, when we get into communication that runs, where emotions tend to run high or could run high, I would be advocating for folks to come together and to have a dialogue that's, you know, I joke about our, our faculty meetings on, on Monday, you know? It's Mondays with Neil, you know, there are opportunities where we can, we can just sit down and process what's going on, some challenges, some, some not. But that would be the primary tool, I would say. But also, we, we have to use our, we have to really leverage our social media, the websites as well, to get certain information out there.
And just as a sort of a quick follow-up on that, you know, part of, part of the role also involves, you know, working with the fire chief, the police chief, the DPW director, the town manager. You know, how do you envision sort of make, you know, developing a relationship with them and being able to communicate with them about issues specific to buildings, student safety, things like that?
How do I envision it?
Yeah.
It's about getting people together. I, I really want to understand, and that's some, that's an area that I pride myself on, is, is, I'm an active listener, I want to meet with those stakeholders to really understand what, what are their, I guess you're saying concerns, Michael, in that. I want to understand what, where they're coming from. I also, I recognize that it's about relationship building, too. I think early on in my tenure of superintendent, I think I have to take that time to really build the relationships. And that takes the face-to-face. I think that shows a lot, if I'm willing to come and meet you and to really hear what you have to say. It validates your concerns and your point of view, and it begins to build those relationships. And ultimately, I think over time, you know, kind of tying it back to the original question, I think over time, that also allows you a little more flexibility with regards to how you communicate.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear your thoughts on how to allow the teachers to have time and resources to teach all levels of the children at the K through eight levels. In high school, they have AP and advanced classes, so we don't have that K through eight. Some would think we need a gifted program at the elementary level. What are your experiences and thoughts on that issue or idea? And then how, how would we support the teachers with this?
So the thought of a gifted, yeah. So in my former, my former place of employment, I was part of the development of a gifted and talented program. My comments and my thoughts about that are mixed, frankly. I think today, it has everything to do with the teachers providing an enriching experience within the core academic times. So when I think of gifted and talented, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around that, I'm thinking, are we, are we thinking of a, of a pullout situation, Kim, or is that...
I guess I'm trying to think of something, how to reach the, there, we have a high number of very high achieving students. And we spend a third of our budget on gifted, on special education, and I'm just trying to figure out if there's any sort of way to reach the kids that are at this...
No, I've got thoughts about that. I, I would just say, too, just to finish my thought about the classroom teachers, is we've made such a shift in the way we're delivering instruction and the way the kids are, are learning, that much of what we do, I feel, does address the needs of all learners. That being said, I also think we have this amazing array of services, extracurricular experiences. I'm thinking in particular of, at the elementary level, where you have a technology integration specialist, you have a librarian, you know, we should be engaging in conversation about how we can integrate all components of the, the building into, into a, an experience that does provide students with an authentic learning experience. So, so that in theory, you know, the kids, when they go to the, their specials, that experience should be feeding what's going on in the classroom and vice versa. And that in itself, I think, is steeped in project-based learning. It's steeped in authentic learning that meets their needs. These are experiences for the students, and it's a responsibility of the classroom teacher to identify what those areas of strength are, and then to create learning experiences that, that do meet their needs through the collaboration of our other, our other teachers in other areas, our specialty areas.
Thanks, thank you.
Question a little different. What is your greatest contribution to our district?
Whoa, whoa.
Yeah, and what can you bring if you're superintendent?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to...
So my greatest, it's like surround sound.
Yeah.
Greatest contribution, greatest contribution and what was the...
What's your greatest contribution to our district? And I guess in the future, what would you like to...
What would I bring to the superintendent?
What would you bring, or what would you hope to be your next greatest contribution?
I'm just going to turn the speaker off.
You don't like hearing listeners aroundside?
Well, I feel like I should be singing.
Is it going to be only on for you, Michael?
You can sing.
You don't want to hear that.
My, my greatest contribution is I think I have added to the team of some amazing administrators, teachers to the community. I would say I, I came here five years ago with the, with the understanding that this was a community that valued education, academic excellence, and it's lived up to that. So I'm truly, I'm truly appreciative of that. I think I'm a hard worker. I think I've created relationships that will endure the good times and the bad times, right? So I, I think I am committed to that, I'm committed to this district. So when we talk about contributions, I think being a team player, supporting the cause, recognizing what's in the best needs of the students is, is right up there. What do I bring to the table in, in the spirit of the superintendency is my commitment to the district. I ask, I ask the question all, all of the time, is what can we do to improve in the spirit of improvement? We can always get better. And so really continuing to push that question. We already have a very, we have a very high bar. And so I think I bring a certain, a certain understanding to the table. I understand what's at stake there. But I also, I'm going to look critically at what is in the best needs of the learners. That's truly what drives me.
Based upon our knowledge of the system, your knowledge of the system, what are our strengths and weaknesses, and how would you address the identified weaknesses?
I think the strengths, I've already spoke a little bit about that, just the, the overall commitment that folks have, that all key stakeholders have, is amazing. So the, that being said, I want to maintain that and to continue to embrace that, that, that passion that we have for, for academic achievement. I think teachers will do whatever they need to do to support the needs of our learners. I think the parents are amazing in their support of the students. The students are wonderful. I look at the extracurricular experiences that kids have here in the district and how the district truly honors those extracurricular activities in a time where budgetarily, it's incredibly challenging to navigate what stays, what are we going to put on the table in the, in the area of cuts? We've committed to providing students with those opportunities, which speaks to what we stand for in developing the, the whole child. So those would be the strengths, the weaknesses. I think we continue to work in silos to a certain degree, meaning at the elementary level. I think we have great collaboration, but we're also bound by certain restrictions, meaning time, frankly. We, we struggle with finding that time to work together collaboratively. The same would be true at the, at the middle school level. I think they do, they, we all do good work in that, in that regard of supporting collaboration, but we just, it's a weakness. I think we need to improve on that. We need to find time as an admin team to really explore ways in which we can get teachers together more, more often or frequently. I think, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think we still are looking to have consistency, not only at the elementary level, I know at the high school level as well, when you're talking about high school being high stakes and, in the spirit of college and career readiness, making sure that we have common assessments and common teaching practices that we all subscribe to. I see that as an area that, I wouldn't call it a weakness, but an area that we are constantly tweaking and constantly adjusting. And that's, that's also true at the elementary level and middle school levels, the, the common assessments and really looking at data to drive our instruction.
So the second part of that question was, how would you address those areas? So the, kind of the separation and consistency issue. What would be your preferred method of dealing with those or methods?
Yeah, we, we need time to sit, as educators, to review those, those practices. So one thing that comes to mind almost immediately is, when you look at our current contractual arrangement at the elementary level, I know we meet, or we have been meeting every Monday and Wednesday as a staff and then as a team. I would put on the table, and obviously it's a contractual issue, but I would put on the table a proposal that would allow teachers to come together, maybe it's once a month, utilizing those contractual times to engage in conversation about those very challenges that we have. Frankly, it's already happened to a certain degree in that you have highly motivated educators taking, taking that initiative. So I would look to formalize that and to really make that a priority.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, quality schools cost money, and one of the biggest items in our budget is the salary question. I'm interested in what experience you have with collective bargaining, and what actions will you take in preparing for collective bargaining with our different school units to assure fairness to all sides?
So...
So what do you know now, and what do you plan to do?
Well, I know it's a, it's a negotiation. We need to come to the table with clear goals, looking at what, what both sides want to So once we've identified those clear goals, it becomes a negotiation of how can we have our needs met in, on, on both sides. I think that's integral. Specific experiences, frankly, it's been limited in the experience. I appreciate the process and understand the process.
Well, if you have limited experience, what would you do to improve your experience, or improve your knowledge?
Well, right, I, I think we... Well, right, I, I think we, again, it's a team approach. I would be meeting with the union reps to discuss, again, unders, discuss what their needs are. I would obviously be familiar with the contracts and, and what are the, the areas in which we feel we can, we can negotiate.
Okay, thank you.
If given the option and financing was available, other than free full day kindergarten, what would you choose to bring to the Long Meadow Public Schools that we do not already have? And I took that out because it's just too easy, I'm sorry. So imagine we had that already.
Okay. I, I, I'm gonna, I, I'll go with the idea of enhancing our steam. I say program, we don't have a program per se, but really looking at how we can better en, enhance the, the steam experience for our, our students. I think K through, through eight, I would say, would be a priority. I just know with the way things are going and in the direction we're headed, I, I think that would be an interesting avenue to explore and to, to support. That being said, I understand too where we stand with the budget and, and that there are challenges with that, but if you ask me just where I thought.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so why should we hire you to be our next superintendent?
Well, I would say for three main reasons. One is my commitment to the district. I've been here five years. I am, I'm invested in the, the community. I can't say enough about that. Everyone is, you know, has that shared vision of academic excellence, and that's what I wanna be part of. So the commitment, I think I, I would say, I would say part two of that is my passion for education, is I always envisioned being in a place that shares a similar passion for education. I think that's proven through my experience so far with working in this district. I feel I had the relationships with individuals that would validate that and support that. And then lastly, my advocacy. I just, I, I truly believe in what we are doing here. I wanna continue to push that message. I think we have an, an amazing team of administrators, teachers, students, and continuing to, to do the work that we have been doing for several years now. I, I think that's, that's most certainly something I wanna be a part of. And to be at that level of leadership, I think would be, would be most welcomed at all levels.
All right, so that's the end of the, the formal questions. You can take a breath. And what questions do you have of us, either individually or as a committee?
Yeah, I, I asked the question the other day and I would ask the committee again. I, I think when looking at academic rigor and where we stand as a district, what are your thoughts about that, that notion of raising the bar even higher? We already have that bar set very high. How do you, how do you envision us continuing that, improving on that, I guess is my question?
What do you want to say?
No, he's just asking for the...
That was rhetorical.
No, I'm just putting it out there. Uh, let's see. Well, I, I guess one weakness or not weakness, but something that we could work on is our special ed program. And, I mean, it's not unique to our district. It's, you know, statewide and everyone's, pretty much has the same trends, but if anybody can do it, our school district can really work on that and make some improvements, so...
I think we should adopt free, full, all-day kindergarten. We should've done it years ago. I support increasing the school day, but that gets into all kinds of problems with state-level officials. Long Meadow has a unique problem. It's got a lot of very talented people living in it, and they're fairly affluent, and they make great demands on the school system, all of which I approve of and I like and I encourage. But the state doesn't give us much money because they feel that we are able to take care of ourselves. This is an old chestnut in education. I'd like to see an increased formula for state aid, when they would take into effect a certain amount of money being allocated to each student. And to a certain extent, this is done with special ed. But I also really don't like the fact that special ed gets blamed for a lot of things. It's costly, it's expensive, but they're the most vulnerable children in our society, so they're the ones who should be taken care of, in my book. So those are my concerns as I wrestle with property tax and trying to deal with the select board and other good folks, I, all of whom are interested in getting a high-quality education for the lowest possible price.
Yeah, I, I kinda wanna echo what John said and what Liz said. I think that an area focus for us needs to continue to be and maybe even more sort of focus needs to be on, on, you know, raising achievement for special education students. You know, I know that the district over the last couple of years has, you know, obviously put a lot of effort in, and you in your role and your colleagues in their roles have put a lot of effort into that. And I agree with you to an extent that there are elements in place right now, and I think we can, we can do a lot better. I think that those students deserve better than what they're, you know, what they're going through, right, or what they're given right now and, and supports that they have. And I think we've gone a long way from where we were with that, but we need to be making greater investments for sure. You know, one thing I think that would go a long way in raising sort of the bar for our district, and this is a district-wide thing, is stronger advocacy, you know, on the part of the superintendent, especially at the state level, to act, kinda piggyback on what John is saying, because obviously whether it's our circuit breaker, our chapter 70, there's, it's not equitable. Towns like Long Meadow don't get really what we need and what we deserve, and the burden unfortunately falls, you know, very squarely on property taxpayers. And they pay a lot for the quality school system we have, you know, and I think that we, we should, we should see more of, you know, the money we send to Boston come back to us. And so stronger advocacy is, is, you know, it's an imperative, not just for, you know, the functioning of the district, but also to meet the needs of those special education students we've been talking about, so...
All right, I'm gonna go to a different path. Not that I don't appreciate and agree about special education, but I think continuing to improve upon the differentiation, especially K through eight. I, I think we've made great strides, and I know it's a lot of work for the teachers, but to continue to challenge and support that effort so that we are meeting the needs of, of every student, not, not just special education, not just those who are in the middle, not just those who are high achieving, but for, for all differentiation seems to be a way to meet all of those needs within a classroom. So I would like to see those efforts continued and improved upon.
I agree with all of those as well. I like your idea of enhancing the steam program. But one of the things that is, an additional thing that is important to me is, is integration of the, and I think you mentioned this a touch, the social-emotional integration in our district, K through 12. And I, I'd just like to see that brought up a level.
And I would, I would definitely like to echo Kim and Janet and everyone that spoke, spoken already. I think in regards to that, I think, you know, a healthy mind, it doesn't matter how much you're capable of learning, but if your mind isn't healthy, and I think, you know, beginning at the very young age of kindergarten and before that, I wanna really start focusing on that during the school day. And I think, you know, to echo Janet, clear and measurable goals for every student specific to them. So, you know, maybe in, in speaking with a parent at the beginning of the year and saying, I'm, I'm expecting, you know, John to grow in this area this much, and, you know, giving us some, some clear and measurable goals that are specific to our own students, that would be great.
I think for me, it's, I appreciate the variation between grade levels and the school buildings and even individual teachers, but, and actually I think that's very important, that there's variation, because you don't want everybody doing the same thing, which sometimes that's what the government seems to want. But the flip side to that is you also, the variation needs to, to lead to similar outcomes for the kids. So if you have different groups of the student population and there's variation between teachers or variation between grades, I wanna make sure that the outcome is similar. And if there's a really great outcome, then maybe that's something we model, and if there's something, there's an outcome that's not so good, then we perhaps need to eliminate that, that one variation that's not working so well, we need to address it. So I really like to kinda look at things and target areas of weakness, which was my question to you. But I think that's really important to kinda dig down and look at what can we improve.
You don't get to ask questions.
Yeah.
Answer, sorry. So did, any, anything else that you'd like to ask?
No.
Or to follow up on any of that?
I do not, I do not. I would, I would maybe, if I had the opportunity to close, I would...
Absolutely.
I would just give several shout-outs, in particular to, you know, the search committee for spending an amazing amount of time working through this process. I, I truly appreciate it, knowing, knowing the time it took and where we're at this evening is incredibly exciting, and, and so thank you for that. School committee, obviously, thank you. And my staff and, and for every, everyone who's supported, has supported me through this process, I have to say thank you. And again, it reminds me of why I'm here and in this position as superintendent and being employed here in Long Meadow. So thank you all so much. I do appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. We had built in a five-minute break so that if anybody needed to excuse themselves, stretch, whatever, and then we will move on to our next interview. So we will be back at 6:05. Mr. Bradshaw, you can lead exercises in the hall if you would like.
Very well.
Yeah.
That's why I can't just say hi to all of them.
Oh, is that all of them?[1406.13]
a not-so-pleasant redistricting process. We are currently watching elementary and middle school enrollments. Do you have any experience with redistricting, and how would you handle watching ongoing enrollment issues?
Sure. Experience in both those areas. I've been superintendent for six years. In my, my first year, we realized we were confronted with the redistricting question. We had three, two through six elementary schools, and it was becoming apparent that we were going to be in this sort of continual redistricting mode, to ensure that there was balance between the schools and balanced class sizes within those schools. And at the same time, you know, enrollment was falling off, and frankly continues to fall off for us in Hampton Wilbraham.
Where's Ruska? I think he's right there.
We should be hearing him.
I was saying it's better that it hits now versus hit us, like, crisscrossy, you know, like, his timing is better than-
One of the girls in my gym broke out of the gymnastics team.
We did that a month ago.
All right, so as soon as Marty-
I'm still thinking about the fact that it's going to end up great.
No, you weren't just here. Right?
All right, so-
Yes, it was me.
We're back. After that short break, we'll be beginning our second interview with Mr. Marty O'Shea, who is the, who is Marty, who is the current superintendent of Hampton Wilbraham School District.
He's equestered across the hallway.
I thought it was the mics again.
Yes, please go. That would be a little embarrassing.
So, I had already introduced that, you know, you are the current superintendent at Hampton Wilbraham, and that we welcome you this evening. The, the format will be similar, we're each going to be asking two questions, giving you an opportunity at the end to ask questions of us, either as a committee or individually. So, we'll go ahead and, and begin. So, I will start with, as superintendent, how would you delegate authority while maintaining accountability?
Sure.
And if you could, please provide an example from your current position.
Sure. So, I, I think the, as I often joke with my staff, that if you took me out of the district for a couple of days, not sure many people would notice, right? But if you take, you know, classroom teachers out, and key administrators, clerical staff, your custodians, that's when the trains sometimes start to come off the track. So, as, as a superintendent, you know, you really have to be committed to delegation. Ultimately, the work of the district is done by teachers who are providing direct service to kids, and by the staff at the building or working directly with families. So, that, that notion of, of delegating responsibility is something that's really important to me. I think I would cite as some examples, maybe something that occurred this week. We were in the process of revamping our technology planning committee. The, the focus of the committee in the last year or so was more around infrastructure and the backbone, and making sure we were well-positioned in that way. And we've made great strides in the last year or so, so we felt like we were kind of in a, in a position to shift gears with that technology planning committee, and so we want to make the focus, once again, more focused around teaching and learning. And so, we have decided to sort of shift the membership of that committee to include more teacher representation, more administrative representation, we talked about involving students and parents as well. And so, that committee, I have asked the assistant superintendent for business and our curriculum director to head that up, and to make sure that, that they are keeping that committee moving. And then, from there, it was a matter of sort of deciding, you know, what are some responsibilities within that committee that, that could be delegated? So, that, that's, that's critical. I'm also, in terms of delegation, I'm, I'm really committed to the idea of, of teacher leadership. I'm, I'm a believer that, you know, anyone in the organization has the potential to be a leader. Certainly, you can lead the people that report to you, but I think everyone in the organization has an opportunity to lead their peers, in terms of providing constructive feedback, in terms of supplementing their work. And also, everyone has an opportunity to, to lead upward. And so, as, you know, what I often tell people is, to make sure that you're, you're telling me what I need to hear, as opposed to what I want to hear. That's a really important concept for me, and I think when you can establish that type of collaborative environment, that type of open and honest discussion in the district, you're going to be in a much better position to create the structures that allow for delegation. And so, you know, getting people to work with me is far more important than getting people to work for me.
Okay, thank you.
What is your view of technology and innovation in the classroom? And can you cite specific examples from your previous experience that lend themselves to greater technological engagement in the classroom? And finally, do you feel the technology used in the classroom leads to better learning outcomes?
Sure. So, I think the, the key, whenever you start to wander into a technology integration discussion, is to think about, what are you, what are you looking for? What outcomes, what outcomes are you seeking to achieve? What are your student learning goals? And so, rather than putting the, the cart before the horse, you want to start with your learning goals, and then build your technology plans around that. You want to consider, you know, whether you're talking about, you know, staffing, or devices, or equipment, it all needs to go back to the goals. And so, so that's really important. I think when, technology has great potential to enhance learning. You know, at the, at the child level, it can be used to, to ensure engagement, it can be used to ensure that learning is adaptive, there's a lot of great technology tools out there that allow for self-guided instruction. And so, I think it's important to think about technology that way. And also, you know, using technology in the, in the management and operation of a school building is important, too, in terms of managing processes relating to staffing, and relating to how you manage substitute teachers, how you manage your library system, how you manage food service. So, I think it's important to remember that part of it. But in terms of, in terms of teaching and learning, I think I'd, I'd cite the experience that we've had with introducing technology as a way to kind of ensure that we understand where individual learners are. That we want to know, you know, what their learning needs are, we want to be able to ensure that they're making adequate progress, we want to ensure that we're monitoring that progress. So, I think that's another way that you can use technology to, to improve instruction and to enhance learning ultimately. And then, certainly, the, the tools that you have available to your teachers is, is critical to think about as well. I had considerable experience in, in developing a vision for technology when we brought the new Minichog online, it opened in 2012. Frankly, we had a lot of consultants that were pushing sort of easy solutions, you know, one-to-one environments, or, you know, all iPads or all laptops. But what we did is, we started with, you know, what, what are we looking for? What, what does the specific disciplines require? What types of instructional equipment? What types of devices do they require? And we built our technology plan, we built our technology vision around that. And so, you know, we're, you know, the, sort of a multi-platforms, platform school, various types of devices, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach, you know? So, if the discipline required the, the power of a, of a laptop, then that made sense. Or perhaps it was iPad carts, or fixed labs, you know? So, I think ensuring that the decisions you make go back to your learning goals is, is the critical part of the conversation, when you're talking about how to use technology to enhance learning.
Thanks.
At the elementary level, we faced overcrowding in our schools, and have just been through a not-so-pleasant redistricting process. We are currently watching elementary and middle school enrollments. Do you have any experience with redistricting, and how would you handle watching ongoing enrollment issues?
Sure. Experience in both those areas. I've been superintendent for six years. In my, my first year, we realized we were confronted with the redistricting question. We had three, two through six elementary schools, and it was becoming apparent that we were going to be in this sort of continual redistricting mode, to ensure that there was balance between the schools, and balanced class sizes within those schools. And at the same time, you know, enrollment was falling off, and frankly continues to fall off for us in Hampton Wilbraham. And so, we had made a decision that we could, that we were, we had more capacity than we needed, and that we were in a position to close an elementary school. So, in 2010, we, we closed an elementary school, and, and reconfigured around that. And, you know, for us, the, the key was to, again, start with our educational goals, and to ensure that whatever configuration we came up with, that it matched the learning needs of kids in our district. You know, I think we wanted to make sure that we engaged parents in that conversation. So, it was, it was kind of a, a full-time job, essentially, to ensure that we were communicating it out, that parents understood the, the issue that was in front of us, they understood what the possible solutions were. We worked hard to solicit feedback from parents, more open forums and, and small community meetings than, than I could ever imagine. And so, that was our response in 2010 to an enrollment challenge, and the, the challenge of, of redistricting. More recently, we are confronted with a situation where we're running two elementary schools, one in Hampton and one in Wilbraham, and, and for us, we feel that we're sort of a, given the enrollment, we feel like we're a one-middle-school district. The Hampton Middle School, in a handful of years, could be under, under 200 students. And so, it'd be a challenge for us to offer the types of programs and supports that we want for kids, given, given the size of that building. And so, we feel like, you know, our, our resources are stretched thin over, over two buildings, and we feel like we could be, we could service children in, in more effective ways in a, in a single setting. And we, we could be staffed more appropriately, our instructional environments could be more suitable to the learning, we could have more electives, more offerings, more related arts. And so, so in this case, you know, again, we're moving the discussion at a pace that the two communities are comfortable with. And, and we don't want to move any faster than they're comfortable with. Ultimately, this is going to have to go to a town meeting vote, and, in both towns, and both towns would have to approve any change we make, if we were to close one of the, one of the middle schools. And so, it's important for us that we, we do our best to get the information out. And so, just, you know, in our case, we, you know, we've, we've taped public access programming, we've used social media, we've got probably about 60 documents up on our website that relate to this middle school initiative, the, the potential to unify at the middle school level. I have met, I've been to the senior center, I've been to the Lions Clubs, I've been to PTOs, I've been to school councils, you know, all in an effort to engage parents and make sure that people have the information they need, make sure they, the questions that they have are getting answered. And so, I think anytime, you know, you're confronted with issues around redistricting and enrollment, you know, half the battle is, is working effectively with community groups, to make sure they understand the challenges that you're facing, and that everybody feels like, that they've been heard. At the end of the day, I think if you do that, you're going to create buy-in for whatever arrangement you come up with. When we closed Memorial Elementary School in 2010, I think, after, you know, there was a lot of, obviously, you can imagine, a lot of consternation, a lot of discussion, and cases, some cases, some pushback. But when we ultimately made the decision, the community, to its credit, jumped on board, and the PTOs reorganized their work, and they, you know, we had parents that came to us and said, "Look at it," you know, "We were, we had some concerns, you answered our questions, now, let's make it work." And so, that, I think that came out of the fact that we did a lot of legwork, we spent a lot of time engaging the community, and making sure people understood where we were in that process. So, and, and I also recognize that every, there's a different dynamic in every community. And, you know, what makes sense in one community and one district might not make sense in another district. And so, you know, I wouldn't want, you know, the community, the Long Meadow community, to think that, you know, somehow the answers that applied in Hampton Wilbraham make sense in Long Meadow. That's not, that's not necessarily the case. And I would want to spend a lot of time, again, engaging the school committee, engaging parent groups, engaging the staff in that discussion, to find out what, what makes sense, if in fact, you're, you're facing those redistricting and enrollment challenges.
My turn. In any capacity, as a teacher, or administrator, or at the district level, what sort of unique, creative, inspired, out-of-the-box type of an idea did you implement that you saw results? And then, have you been involved with new and different education reforms that have helped students achieve?
Sure. Could I ask you to repeat that?
Absolutely. I know. In any capacity, so we'll just do the first one right now.
Yeah.
All right. In any capacity, as a teacher, administrator, or district level, what sort of unique, creative, inspired, out-of-the-box type of idea did you implement that you saw results?
So, I'll still go back to my teaching days. So, I began, as, as you know by now, a teacher in Long Meadow Public School, well, bringing my public school teaching career here in Long Meadow. And in fact, it was in this general area, I taught in the open space at the old, at the old high school, while the, and so, since they got rid of the orange carpet, I was encouraged to see that, and the gray walls. But I'll go back to that time, when I had, you know, stumbled upon an opportunity to apply for a Community Service Learning Grant. And, and I, I went after that, I think it was $25,000 or something, and so, it was a grant that I was successful in securing, and we implemented some really neat projects with kids, where it wasn't just about community service, but there was a learning angle to it as well. And I think that that, I like to think that that, that planted some seeds for, for community service, and for service learning here in Long Meadow Public Schools. And so, that was something that, I think it kind of gave me my first taste of administrative work, and it was, it was very much out-of-the-box, and it ultimately led to a Community Service Learning course. And so, that was, that was something that I think that was, that was really important to me. Kind of more broadly, as a superintendent, I think, you know, our work around student safety and wellness has been significant. You know, we have, in the last 10 years, made a very significant commitment to student safety. We have been very vigilant about the, the physical safety of buildings, we've been very vigilant about emergency preparedness, and we, we've broadened our safety and wellness initiatives to include the, the social and emotional well-being of students. We look after their, their, their mental health as well, and as most educators will tell us, they're increasingly concerned about the, the behavioral health of students nowadays. But where we, where we went out-of-the-box, I think, was in our emergency preparedness efforts. Several years ago, we conducted a tabletop food safety emergency planning event, and we gathered about probably 30 or 40 people at a giant conference room at Friendly's out in, on Boston Road in Wilbraham. And we had public safety, we had teachers, we had school committee, we had parents, we had students there, and the event was, where we went through an exercise, where we planned out how we would respond if there was a food safety event in Hampton Wilbraham schools. And we worked with, there was a, federal partners from the USDA, who kind of came in and kind of facilitated that, that safety exercise for us. And it really brought the community together, it was very out-of-the-box, I hadn't been part of something like that, ever, but it brought together a lot of key players, a lot of key stakeholders in, in safety. And so, you know, the, the relationships that we formed around the table that day, and the conversations that we had around the table that day, were, were really powerful. And I think that's had a, that's had a lasting effect, in terms of our, our commitment to emergency preparedness. And along the same lines, something I think, you know, maybe it's not out-of-the-box anymore, but we, we, we conduct annual safety audits, where we, at the beginning of the year, and this kind of goes beyond what, you know, police and fire might normally do, but we send a team out to every school in the, in the district. fire might normally do, but we send a team out to every school in the, in the district with their clipboards. And the team includes custodians, members of our clerical staff, there's usually teacher rep, administrative reps. And we go into the buildings and we're, we've got a checklist that we're going through to look at the, the safety of that building. And you're looking at, you know, everything from, you know, the doors to the lighting to, you know, wires on the ground, sorry about that, you know, but all those things, you know, you're evaluating everything. And so, we've, I think we've trained ourselves, you know, through these sort of out-of-the-box things, I think we've trained ourselves to really be vigilant again about student safety and wellness. Was there a second part, or was that?
The bar is off.
Sorry.
Have you been involved in any new or different education reforms that have helped students achieve?
There were different education reforms. Yeah, I, I don't know if, if it would fall into the, the idea of a reform, because I think it was, you know, this was sort of a homegrown initiative. We have made a very concerted commitment to MTSS, which is, which is multi-tiered systems of support, which in other districts perhaps here might be known as RTI or Tiered Instruction. And so, both on the academic and the behavioral side, we have committed to ensuring that we are, that we understand where learners are, that we've done some screenings, that we are monitoring their progress, and that we've got supports in place to intervene when, if they're not making sufficient progress. And so, that's a, I guess, a reform. It's a, it's a new approach that, that we've been, that we've tried to roll out. And I think, you know, to give you some flavor perhaps of how, you know, my leadership style is, as we rolled out MTSS, one of the things I often said to people is, "We're going to move as fast on this as, as our, our training allows, as resources allow, as personnel allows, as time allows." Because I think you, you get more lasting change when you're cognizant of those things. And so, I think that's had a lasting effect on, on student learning. I think we have created or institutionalized an approach where we're not waiting for kids to fail, that we are, you know, we're, we're so tuned in to where they are as learners and we're so tuned in to our efforts to monitor their progress that I think it's ultimately been really, really beneficial to kids.
Can I just ask, what, what year did you start doing the MTSS?
Well, so it was, it goes back to, we started doing it probably in 2011. But, when I say we started, it was a year of, of study. In fact, I remember sitting in a conference room at the old Minichog where we had gathered about 20 people. And it was school psychologists, special ed director, teachers, we had an outside consultant that sat with us. And we just started to kind of get our heads around RTI and, and what it was and how it worked and how it might work for us in Hampden-Wilbraham. So, it was a study year followed by a pilot year followed by an implementation year. So, we were really, you know, really methodical in, in the way we approached that because, again, we wanted to make sure that it was, it had deep roots, you know, that it wasn't just something that we, you know, foisted on, on the staff from above. And I like to think that we created that, that type of engagement, that type of buy-in that you need to make these things successful. Yeah.
Hello. So, based on your knowledge of our school system, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing our special education program? And what steps would you take to address the challenge?
Sure. I think the, so I, I just, you know, quickly in terms of my own experience. So, when I started as superintendent in Hampden-Wilbraham, nearly 20% of our students were identified as needing special education services. We're in the 15 or 16% range now. And so, I think that's come about though, not because we're denying services or, you know, we're not supporting learners. It's more that, I'll go back to my earlier question, that, you know, we try to stay out of that, that, you know, wait-to-fail mode, you know, we want to make sure that, that it's a lot easier to address. I was a high school teacher. And so, one of the, the shifts that, that I quickly took when I became superintendent was to understand that if we're addressing the needs of our youngest learners, in the end, you're going to avoid some of the challenges, and that goes to your question, you're going to avoid some of the challenges down the road. So, I've really come to understand the importance of, of early intervention, the importance of monitoring students' progress, the importance of, of really targeted swift interventions so that you're making sure that students are making, are making adequate progress along the way, that they're keeping up with their peers. And I think if you, if you attend to that, if you're doing that, you're avoiding some of the challenges that special education can present. I mean, let's face it, you know, special education can be a, it can be a budget challenge, right? And so, you, you know, to the extent that you can kind of avoid some of the problems early on, you're going to avoid the budget challenges later on. I think one of the ways, you're also, one of the steps that I would want to ensure Long Meadow took was to make sure that, that there's adequate in-district programming. And so, you know, we'll often say that if, if there's, if there's four, four children that we're sending out to a private placement, we should look at whether or not we could provide comparable education here in district, you know. So, we look at, do, would we have the space, the capacity, the training, everything that you need to build programs in district. And so, you know, and, and not only is that good, good for budgets, more importantly, most importantly, it's good for kids, you know. When you have the chance to educate children in their, in their own schools, in their own district, that's, that's really, you know, powerful, you know. So, inclusion models can all, can often, you know, help you avoid some of the budget challenges that, that you might face. So, I think that's, you know, and, and that's the, one of the challenges to face. And then, the other thing is, I think you talk about like the, the behavioral challenges that our students are facing as, as another, as another challenge in education nowadays. I mentioned to one of the parents, I think I was speaking with earlier, that when, in Hampden-Wilbraham, when I was a principal and we were facing some budget challenges, the question was, you know, "Do we need school adjustment counselors in every building?" Now, that's not even a question. It's, it's not, you know, is, it's not nice to have, it's a must-have. And so, having those, you know, having personnel in place to support the behavioral health of kids is, is really, really important. And also, engaging your school psychologists to make sure that they're working directly with teachers and sometimes, and to the extent that they can, working directly with kids to address those behavioral challenges, to, to address their behavioral health needs. So, I think that's a looming issue for, for school districts everywhere, is how are we going to address the behavioral health needs of children? Because at the end of the day, there's not a lot of learning happening if, if behaviorally, if, or in terms of their mental health, if they're not ready to learn. And so, that, that's a, that's a looming challenge.
Please, ask a follow-up to that.
Yeah.
So, in regard to the achievement gap in our particular system, are you familiar with kind of our, our progress generally, or?
In terms of, so, grade levels, for example, or disciplines that might be?
Yeah. When I was thinking of weaknesses, I mean, it's, we have certain areas that, I mean, we had a presentation a while ago, but there were certain areas that looked like we could work on.
Yeah.
I mean, you might not be familiar with that, you know, at this moment, but that was kind of the, the gist of the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, I think when the, you know, when you're talking about achievement gaps, or if there's soft spots that you need to address, I think, yeah, I may not be up to speed in the way that, you know, you are, your administrators are, your teachers are in terms of what it means here in Long Meadow. But, I think there's, you know, pretty, there's some well-defined ways that you can address those achievement gaps. So, as an example, in our case, we, we were not seeing the outcomes we wanted in elementary math in Hampden-Wilbraham. And so, we pulled together a, a math team. And over the course of several years, you know, sort of started by doing an inventory, an assessment of our existing practice, existing resources. We were taking a look at scope and sequence, the extent to which we were aligned across grades and across classrooms, to see, you know, what's creating that achievement gap that, that you're talking about. So, that, you know, that's real, that, that became something that we spent considerable time studying. And then, ultimately, we decided that we needed to put better tools in our, in our teachers' hands. And we decided that we, we needed a new math series. And so, after considerable study, I think we spent, sent the team over here to, to Long Meadow to take a look at the math practices here, we made some decisions about a math series that made sense for us in Hampden-Wilbraham. And then, you know, that's obviously not when your work is done. If you really want to address the achievement gaps, then you start to say, "Okay, what, what types of training, what types of professional development do we need for our teachers, what types of equipment might they need? How can we engage parents to support the implementation of that series so as to strengthen achievement, to improve learning outcomes?" So, all those things had to happen. And, and, you know, you can't, you can't, I would never stand in front of the community and say, "If there's an achievement gap," I would never kind of stand in front of the community and say, you know, "We're gonna, we're gonna fix that in a month or six months." It's, it's a long process. If you really, if you want to do it right, you want to make sure that the outcomes are what you're looking for. It, it takes time, it takes investment, and it takes, it takes some patience, and it takes a lot of, of support for, for classroom teachers.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm next. Good evening. What actions will you take to ensure that building principals are effectively mentoring and supervising their classroom teachers? And if you could, give us your current experience with that and what you think works best.
You said building principals and mentoring and evaluation, is that?
Mentoring and supervising their classroom teachers.
Supervising, yeah.
The principals mentoring and supervising the teachers.
Yeah. So, I, I like that, you know, the, the question's framed as, in terms of evaluation and supervision and mentoring, because I think it, it's, it takes both. I think, you know, where, to the extent possible, I think you want to start with the mentoring and coaching and ensuring that your teachers have adequate models of the types of instruction you're looking for. And so, again, as superintendent, you know, I'm not the one, I, I don't know how to teach fractions or quadratic equations or anything like that. But, can I create a framework, can I create an infrastructure to ensure that there's proper mentoring and coaching going on? And so, that's something that, that I'm very interested in. We, we have had some budget challenges in Hampden-Wilbraham and we've eked out some elementary math coaching. And, and the results have been, have been fantastic. And, and oftentimes, that mentoring and coaching model, it really depends on the, the person, you know, the, the relationship that that person has with the classroom teachers. And so, if you can create a constructive environment for that, that's really powerful. Principals are busy people and, but I think my expectation as superintendent is that they're out and about, that they're, that they're in classrooms and that they, because they're experts, that they're not, that they are in their coaching and mentoring and that they're providing appropriate supports. And then, you know, in terms of the supervision part of it, that's where you, you have the educator evaluation framework. And, you know, there, there's been a lot of initiatives that have come from the state, that some of which we're comfortable with and some of which we're not. I think one of the good initiatives has been the educator evaluation framework. I think it has strengthened the ability of, of teachers, or excuse me, of principals to, to properly supervise and properly evaluate teachers. And so, and it's a, even that framework is a sort of reciprocal process in the sense that teachers are involved in goal-setting and self-assessment. And so, that becomes kind of the basis for that evaluation. So, anytime you can have a supervision framework that encourages reflection and self-assessment, I think that's, that's, that's very powerful. Because, you know, as a, as a, as a principal, as a, as an administrator, you can say, "You need to do this, this, and this." But, if you can encourage the teachers to reflect on what they need to do, I think it, it has, it has more powerful effect. And then, you know, the other part of the framework, it encourages principals to be active, to be out and about in the classrooms and to have that, you know, they have that contact with teachers on a regular basis. So, I think that, that's something I've, I have a lot of experience with, the, the implementation of that educator evaluation framework. And I'm a, I'm a strong believer in the concept of coaching and mentoring to improve instruction.
Can I do a little follow-up?
Sure.
You know, we've heard talk about the sage on the stage.
Yeah.
And the guide by your side. I'd say increasingly the modelist, the latter.
Yeah.
Is, is that your experience, or you still see a need for having, well, lecture, presentation, then follow-up with student activity?
Yeah. I, I see a need for instruction that matches the needs of students. And so, you know, it, I'd say, I, I know this is not a great answer, but I think the answer is it depends. You know, it depends on...
It does depend. That's a good answer.
It depends on the, it depends on the grade, it depends on the discipline, it depends on the students that are in front of you. I mean, you know, so, as a classroom teacher, I recognize that some students could handle lecture in short bursts and other classes could handle and then maybe, you know, enjoyed, maybe they didn't enjoy my lectures, I don't know, enjoyed lectures in longer bursts. So, you have to, it's really about, it's not about what the teacher should do as much as what, what do the students need, what types of instruction do they need. And so, that's, I think, yeah, it depends.
Thank you.
If you were walking around doing observations, could you describe what you believe the perfect classroom would look, would look like at each of our three levels, elementary, middle, and high school?
Yeah. I think they look the same, elementary, middle, and high. The first word that I wrote down was engaged learners, you know. So, I think that students who are, who are active, who are engaged, who are participating in their learning is, is, is the most important characteristic that, that I would look for. When I walk into a classroom, it's not so much that I'm looking at what the teacher's doing, I'm looking at what the children are doing, what are the students doing. And I, you know, when I walk into a classroom, I, you know, to the extent I'm not being disruptive, I'll ask the kids, "What, what are you trying to learn? What, what do you think your teacher wants you to learn?" And I think it's important that kids can articulate that. So, they need to know, if I walk into a classroom and I, and I say, you know, "What, what does that perfect learning environment look like?" It's an environment where kids know what's expected of them. And there are different ways to achieve that. And, and that might vary depending on level. But, I think ensuring that, that students are engaged, they know what's expected of them, that, I'd also look to see, is there a lot of sort of formative instruction happening? Is, you know, are there, are there checks for learning going on? You know, so even going back to John's question, you were talking about a lecture. So, lecture's okay, but are you, along the way, are you checking to see that the kids understand? So, whatever the, whatever the method you're using, I think it's important that you have those frequent checks. And again, good teachers have, you know, 100 different ways of checking for student learning, you know. Back when I taught, it was probably, "Everybody get it?" And everybody said, "Yeah." And that, you know, but that's not what we want nowadays, you know. The, it used to be, "I taught it, therefore, I'm done." It's now, it's, the emphasis is on, "Did the students learn?" And so, you know, that perfect classroom is one where you've got some real strong evidence that kids are engaged, that they're learning, that they're active, that they feel really respected, I would add to that, you know, that they feel respected by their teacher, that there's an atmosphere of mutual support, that kids feel respected by one another, that there's order, you know. And, and that doesn't mean, you know, sometimes learning gets sloppy, but even that, there's got to be, there's got to be a clear framework, you know, that the teacher has set up. So, those are some of the things I'd look for.
Thank you.
So, how would you plan to raise the performance of each of the three levels of students in our district? Those who are low achieving, those who are in the middle, and those who are high performing students?
I, I think again, it's, it's the, I think the answer's similar. The way, the way you raise the performance of a low, middle, or high achieving student, it's very similar. I think for starters, it's, you know, you start with, "What are your expectations for those students?" You know. Something that comes back to me a lot when I talk about, when I think about the expectations that we have for kids. And, you know, you get a group of kids in a room and you say, "Everybody raise your hand as high as you can." And then you say to the kids, "All right, raise it a little higher." And, you know, they, they usually can. So, so, you know, stretching students, making sure that you've got an appropriate level of expectations for them based on, you know, where they are as learners. And, and, you know, the expectations you have for low, middle, and high, you know, there's got to be a baseline set of standards. But, you, you don't want to create, you don't want to discourage kids either. So, I think, you know, stretching kids is, is really important. The other... The other part of that is, how do you raise, how do you raise performance? That you know where they are as learners. You know where they are social emotionally, you know where they are academically, that before you even start instruction, you, you understand, you know, what are their research skills, what are their writing skills, what are their reading levels? You have to start where the kids are. You can't, you know, just pretend that every kid in front of you is reading at the same level, or writing at the same level, or can engage at the same level. So, I think that's another, that's another key piece of it, in terms of raising performance. And that applies whether you're talking, you know, low, middle, or high. And that you're, you're monitoring their progress regularly, and that you have a set of assessments that help you decide, you know, on the performance of those students. I, you know, one of the, one of the things that I, I think is really powerful in education is common assessments. And, you know, having common assessments across, across classrooms at a, at a particular grade level, or across, you know, a, a discipline is, is really important, because, you know, if once, if there are, if you have common assessments that are commonly developed by teachers, and I'm not talking about necessarily, you know, DDMs or outside assessments, I'm talking about assessments that are, are, you know, developed by instructors, by our teachers, then I think you can gauge whether or not you're getting, you're hitting the performance levels that you're looking for. So, so much of what you do to help students achieve is, you know, you, you want to make sure that you're, that the content is appropriate, your expectations are appropriate, your, your teaching methodology is appropriate. At the, at the more, you also have to think about it sort of systemically, you know, in terms of, how do you, how do you schedule buildings? Do you have schedules that allow for flexibility, so that you can place teacher, stu-, excuse me, you can place students in, in classrooms where they're going to be challenged, and where you can get the performance that you're looking for? Do you have broad enough offerings, you know, to get the performance levels that you're looking for? So, that, that sort of systemic approach is really important. It can't all be on, can't all be on the, sort of the, the, the back of the teacher to differentiate and engage, depending on the unique needs of learners. At the, at the building level, at the district level, you need, you need appropriate systems in place, appropriate schedules in place, appropriate staffing in place, to ensure you're hitting those performance levels that you're looking for.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
As superintendent, you are the public face of the district, and as such, the voice of the district in many ways. What type of communication will you utilize when speaking to various community stakeholders, whether they're parents, community members without school-aged children, or other elected and town officials, the school committee, and district employees from the administrative team, all the way down through support staff? And could you please cite some specific examples where you've utilized effective communication in the past?
Sure. Yeah, I, that's a responsibility and a role I take very seriously, to be in the public face of the, of the, of the district. And, and that's, you know, frankly, it, I need to be, there's a great responsibility that superintendent carries to communicate clearly and effectively. I think you need to write well, you need to speak well, and you need to, you need to speak carefully, and you need to write carefully. And so, that, that's really important to me. I, you know, that communication role is, is job one for me. I think that we're in this day and age where there's a lot of information that's competing for everyone's attention. Parents are busy, our staff is busy, school committee has lots of responsibilities beyond coming here every couple of weeks. And so, you have to be really, you know, purposeful in your efforts to push out information. You know, it, perhaps at one time, it used to be good enough just to, you know, put something in a kid's backpack, or, you know, post it on your website and say it's there, go looking for it. I think now, it's a matter of pushing out information. And so, you know, using, using social media is key. I, this year, started a, a Facebook page for the district, and I manage it myself, and completely. It's, you know, it's something that I do. And I'm amazed at the way, how powerful a tool it is to engage young parents in the district. And, you know, so, you know, you put a picture of a principal in a turkey suit or something like that at Thanksgiving, and, you know, it's, it's a way to keep people informed, it's a way to keep people engaged. So, but it's also, we use it obviously for more, for more serious matters. So, I think pushing out communication is key. And I've used, I've used public access frequently. Not too long ago, I taped a public access show with two of our principals on the middle school unification initiative. And, again, not a, not an award winner, but, you know, it's, it, I think it gets the information out, and, and it puts, so that's important. Letter writing, getting the information out there. I've been, in the last month or so, I've been to senior centers, you know, Lions Clubs. I've been, I've, I've met, I've met retired selectmen in the town of Hampden at Dunkin' Donuts on this, I mean, this is, you know, I just go where the action is. And so, that's really important, as superintendent too, is, is being present in the buildings, and, and getting out, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a concert, if there's an athletic event, it's amazing how much communication you can, you can achieve in those moments, and how much feedback you can get from parents. It's a great way to kind of keep your finger on the pulse of the community. In terms of communicating with all the, the groups that, that you've mentioned, I like to, you know, within, within reason, obviously, the communication that I have with staff, I like it to be the communication that I have with parents, and vice versa. If I'm sending home, something home to the parents, I'm always sure to copy the staff on it as well, so that everybody has a clear idea of what, of what's being said. With regard to the school committee, I think that the, the communication that happens between a superintendent and school committee is, is critical to the overall performance of the district. And, and, you know, my rule of thumb with the school committee is, you know, first of all, I recognize the school committee's my boss, right? And that I report to the school committee. And so, every, every time there's a meeting, the school committee gets a written report from me. I try to keep the school committee informed of things that are happening in the district, no surprises. You know, if, if there's a, if there's an event in a school, if there's a, if there was a public safety event, I want the school committee to know about it before it hits Facebook, right? Before you see somebody in the supermarket. So, no surprises, I think, is, is, is really important to me. Keeping the school committee informed, and giving school committees the information you need to, to make good decisions is really important. We had a, there's a subcommittee happening probably as I speak, at, at, out in Hampden-Wilbraham, making an important decision, a recommendation rather, around Park versus MCAS. You know, I saw it as my job, this, this is the pros and the cons. This would be the pros of sticking with MCAS, this would be the cons. And so, that, you know, getting that information to the school committee as, as a decision-making body is, is really, really, really important. You know, making sure that you have all the information you need to make budget decisions, and staffing decisions, and, and policy decisions is, is important. So, communication is, is key, and it needs to be, you know, constant, it needs to be regular, and you just got to do your best to get in front of all the noise that's out there, because there's a lot of information, obviously, that, that we're, we're trying to compete with. So.
I know, you've got to keep flipping the pages for each other. All right. I'd like to hear your thoughts on how to allow the teachers to have time and resources to teach all levels of children at the K through eight levels. Some would think we need a gifted program in the elementary level. What are your experiences and thoughts on the issues, and how to support the teachers with this?
Specifically around gifted and talented, or?
All levels of children, but...
Okay.
Given, but we do talk a lot about the, the lower tiers, but, so maybe some ideas for the higher tier.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think, obviously, you know, your ability to differentiate is, is critical, and make sure you're meeting the needs of all learners is, is, is very, very important. And so, as I mentioned earlier, you know, so much of that happens at the classroom level, in terms of the, the reading groups that a teacher might establish, or the math groups that a teacher might establish, or the homework assignments, or the, or the, the content of the instruction. So, so a lot of it can happen there, but I don't think that's where it ends. I think, you know, as, as a school district, I would want to ensure that, that we have some, some sort of systems or schedules in place that allow for that differentiation as well, you know. So, that, again, it's not entirely dependent on the, the talents of your, of your teachers. So, can you, can you create at the building level, can you create schedules that allow for, for gifted and talented programming, for, that allow for enrichment? I think, I think that's something that, that you have to take a look at. It's a challenge. I mean, let's, you know, let's be honest, you know, finding, find, you know, finding the time for it, finding the resources for it is a challenge. That doesn't mean you ignore it, but I think that's something that you, you have to confront. Long Meadow has an outstanding tradition of using community resources to provide the types of enrichment that might help us meet gifted learners. And so, the work of the educational endowment, the work of parent groups, to support those enriching activities is, is important. But again, so I think it's a combination of things. I think it's a matter of ensuring that you have some good solid instructional practice going on at the classroom level, that at the building level, that you, you have systems and schedules in place that allow for enrichment programming, and advanced programming. And then, also, you're tapping into community resources. So, I think it's a, you know, it's a, it's sort of a multi-pronged thing.
Okay. What is your greatest contribution to your district, and what can you bring to ours?
Greatest contribution? So, I'll talk about it two ways. One is, sort of, I think relates to the, the culture and, and of the district. I think that the relationships that a superintendent has with, with key stakeholders is, is critical. And I think that that can, the relationships that, if a superintendent has positive working relationships with the school committee, with parent groups, with the president of the union, with his leadership team, or her leadership team, I think all of that can really help build the, the type of culture that you need to be educationally effective. So, I'd like to think that, that's something that I brought to Hampden-Wilbraham, that I try to be very open in my conversations with folks. I, because as I said earlier, you know, having people tell me what they want to tell me, and what they think I need to hear, is, is so much more important than them telling me what, you know, what I, what I, what they think I want to hear. You know, tell me what I need to hear is, is so important. And so, I think, I hope that that's been a, a contribution that I've, I've, I've brought to the district. I have, I believe, strong relationships with a lot of key stakeholders. I've worked under four different school committee chairs, I've worked with two different union presidents. I believe I have strong relationships, personal relationships with, with public safety officials outside the district, with selectmen, with members of the finance committee, capital planning committee. It's really important to me, on a personal level and a professional level, to, to reach out and engage. And so, that, that is important to me. I guess more on the technical side, I'm really proud of, I use the phrase, how we've weathered the storm in Hampden-Wilbraham. We've had some significant budget challenges. And I have, you know, as somebody who started out as a, as a high school history teacher, I've learned more about school budgeting than I could ever imagine. I've learned how we can think of different ways of doing business, how we can be more efficient, how we can change our practices, to ensure that we have, you know, we're making the types of allocations that support teaching and learning. You know, so, you know, that, I guess, on the technical side, has been, been very, very important to me, that whenever we have faced these challenges, we're looking at every nook and cranny of the organization, to see if there's better ways of doing business. And, and we've achieved that, and I'm really proud of that, and we continue to do that. And there's been some really hard conversations that we've had, there's been some, there's been some challenges, but, you know, at the end of the day, you have to be, you have to have smart business practices to ensure that you're supporting teaching and learning.
So, based upon your knowledge of our system, what are our strengths and weaknesses, and how would you address the weaknesses?
I think, you know, clearly, the, the strength is the, the strength of the community as a whole. And this is a community that values education, and values education in the, in the, in the broadest, most important sense of that term. So, in the sense that, I, I think this is a community that, that recognizes that education is, is about far more than, than test scores. I think this is a community that clearly values the arts. It's a community that clearly values the, the overall growth and development of a child. And I think that's, that's a, a critical strength of Long Meadow. And, you know, that is something, I've always felt fortunate, when I was a classroom teacher in this district, I always felt the, the positive support of the community. And I felt like, you know, the kids came to us ready to learn. I think that, I think the weakness might, again, this might be something that cuts across a lot of districts. I think, you know, there's a lot shifting right now, you know, in terms of, you know, we mentioned the behavioral health of students, we mentioned the, you know, long-term enrollment trends, the long-term demographic trends, the, the challenging budgets. All of those things are going to be confronting, and already are confronting districts everywhere. And so, you know, that, that's going to be, you know, those are, you, you want to make sure that those challenges don't create systemic weaknesses, you know, that they don't undermine the great work that's happened. And so, I think that's, that's, that's where I would, would really want to focus. It's important, as a superintendent, that you're, you're thinking, you know, two years out, five years out, 10 years out, that you're looking, you know, around the, around the corner to see, you know, what are the challenges that, that are out there. And you should never, you know, frankly, you don't want to rest on, you know, your past performance, your past successes. You know, you have to, I, I think organizationally, you have to be ready to be nimble, you have to be ready to respond to new realities, new needs of children. And so, you, you don't want to get static, you don't want to get satisfied, you don't want to, you know, become complacent.
Thank you.
Okay. Quality schools cost money. What actions would you take in preparing for collective bargaining with our different school units to assure fairness to all sides?
Sure.
And maybe talk about your own experiences, what you applied to Long Meadow.
Sure. Yeah, quality schools cost money. And so, I, I think, there's two ways of thinking about it, when you're, when you're talking about budgets, you know, at the highest level, you want to think, but, you know, in terms of your revenue and your costs. And so, you know, before you even get into collective bargaining solutions and things, I think, you know, so as a superintendent, you've got an important advocacy role for children. And, you know, you're in a unique position to work with the school committee and other stakeholders, to ensure that the community understands the needs of the district. You're in a unique position to reach out and talk to legislators. You're in a unique position to watch what's happening at the state level, and understand what the, what the, what the revenue stream is looking like. So, that's, that's really important, I think, in terms of, you know, you said quality schools cost money, is, you have to understand what, what your costs are, and what the potential revenue looks like, and, and where they meet. And, you know, it's, you can't hide the fact that your biggest cost center, it relates to personnel. You know, we're, we're a, we're a service industry, we're a service organization, and so, your, your largest cost center relates to salaries. And so, the, the agreements that you enter into with your, with your collective bargaining counterparts are, are crucial. And I've been through it many times now, I've been through negotiations with five bargaining units, and where, where it, I think that comes back to that relationship that you have with, with your union executive board, or your union president is key. So, that there's this, you know, you go into negotiations with a, a atmosphere of mutual trust, respect, transparency, and, and then you start by identifying, you know, what by identifying, you know, what are the, what are the common interests that we have? You know, is there any way to use this collective bargaining agreement to drive the common interests that we might have? Um, and then you start to figure out ways to structure, uh, compensation and structure, um, benefits and, and, and structure working conditions in a way that ensures that you continue to attract and retain the best teachers, you know, because at the end of the day, again, you, you can't forget that the single most important factor in a child's education is the teacher that is in, is in front of them on a daily basis. And so, attracting and retaining the best teachers is really important, but understanding that, that budgets are finite. And so, being open with your union counterparts to, to say, this is what we're looking at, these are the challenges, you know, and, and working with them to try and structure, you know, all those things, compensation and benefits and working conditions, to structure it in such a way that it, it, it makes sense to them. So, you know, we've gone as far, in some cases, not, this doesn't apply everywhere, but in some cases, to work with, you know, collective bargaining situations, to say, this is what we can afford. This is, you know, based on our costs and based on our revenue, this is what we can afford. How would you like to, how do you want to arrange that? You know, how do you want to structure that? Um, but you also have to look to, you know, you have to look to the collective bargaining process anytime you, you want, you know, real systemic change. So, I'll give you an example of food service. Uh, we, we were, um, about three years ago, uh, we were looking at our food service balance sheet, and we thought that it was more costly than it needed to be. Uh, that, um, you know, the, the salaries had gotten out of line with, the wages had gotten out of line with area districts. We also realized we had a really inefficient operation, in the sense that we had independent managers, food kitchen managers, and food service workers who were in the bargaining unit. And it created a lot of, you know, for all parties, for us and for the food service workers, that arrangement didn't work, because there was questions about, well, what's managerial work and what's food service work? And so, you know, it took a long time, but we brought all parties together. We wound up, you, the managers wound up being part of the bargaining unit, but it created a much more fluid, collegial, uh, efficient kitchen, so that, you know, there weren't tasks that some people could do that other people couldn't do. And so, that wouldn't have happened if we hadn't achieved it through collective bargaining. And so, that was an example of how, you know, we recognized that we, systemically, we had some problems that had to be addressed through the collective bargaining process. And so, you know, I'm really proud that, you know, we, we wound up, I think, investing in, in, uh, in the food service operation. Um, we also focus, you know, our revenues are up, our, our costs are, have been contained, uh, and, and I haven't heard a peep from our kitchens. They've been working really well and effectively and smoothly. So, that's an example of how you can use collective bargaining and, you know, in ways that make sense to all parties.
If you were given the option and financing was available, other than free full-day kindergarten, what would you choose to bring to the Long Meadow Public Schools that we do not already have?
So, if I was, uh, one more time, if I was given the option...
And financing was available.
Yeah.
What other than free full-day kindergarten would you choose to bring to the Long Meadow Public Schools that we don't already have?
Uh, I think it would be extended day programming. Um, again, you know, I don't know how much financing would be available to me, but, uh, I, I think, you know, we're in a situation now, we have 180 days of school, uh, and, you know, six and a half hours a day, whatever it is. Uh, and we're, we're trying to do a lot, uh, for kids, and they, and they need a lot. And, and so, having opportunities to extend, uh, the day, I think, would be, if, if financing were not an issue, I think that would be, that would be powerful. And I think that's when you could really get into, what we talked about earlier, the enrichment, um, you know, um, the tailoring instruction and content and programming to the unique needs of kids. And, you know, it, I think if you talk to most, particularly elementary teachers, they'll, they'll tell you that it's, it's hard to squeeze everything in. Maybe, I suppose, all of our teachers would say that. It's hard to squeeze everything in, you know. Uh, my math instruction, the, the literacy objectives, and, um, you know, art and music and P.E., uh, that's become a challenge. And so, I think if we were, I think if financing were, were not in a, uh, an object, I think, full day or extended day, uh, services would be, would be key. You could also, uh, use that for professional development for staff as well. You know, again, trying to find the time to provide the professional development that, that you know teachers would benefit from is often a challenge. Time is our most precious resource in education, you know, time for learning, time for teachers, time for collaboration. That's something that I would invest in.
Thank you.
All right. So, why should we hire you to be our next superintendent?
Uh, that's a great question. So, I will say that, um, I think it's my interest in the position. Um, I am very happy in my current assignment as superintendent of schools in Handen and Wilbraham. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a great, two great communities. Um, I work for a very supportive school committee, incredibly talented teachers, great leadership team, we do really well together. Uh, so there really isn't that, that push factor. There's really nothing that, you know, this is the only, this is the only position that I applied for and would apply for. Um, the attraction of Long Meadow is intriguing, you know, to come back to, and as corny as it might sound, it, it, it's true, that to come back to the district that I know as a classroom teacher, uh, to come back to the district that I, that I have hold in very high regard, and to come back to a, to a community that supports learning the way it does, would be really, really appealing to me, in a lot of ways, personally and professionally.
So, that ends our formal questions. Do you have any questions that you would like to ask of us?
Uh, sure. I think through the, through the process, I've gotten, uh, some sense of this, uh, and certainly even from the questions tonight, I've gotten some sense of this. But, uh, I guess I'd be interested, and this is not directed at any one committee member, but, you know, what are the, what are the attributes that you're looking for in your next superintendent? What are some of the characteristics?
All right. Russ, I'll start at this end this time.
Well, I think your, um, cover letter kind of covered one of my main ones. So, it's really honesty. I really want a lot of communication, and I want kind of equal information to everybody. I think what you talked about with redistricting, for example, that was, you know, that's exactly what I like to see. A lot of open communication. At the end of the process, maybe end up with a decision people didn't love, but they can live with it.
Yeah.
And, um, but I also want somebody that knows how to run a system and, and how to move things forward, and really target areas where, you know, if we have an issue, then hopefully we can look at that issue, address it, figure out what our goal is and how to meet the goal.
So, I would echo Russ, and then I would add, um, somebody who's innovative and who thinks outside the box and comes up with creative solutions that we might not have thought of. And, um, on top of that, just someone who's not afraid to identify a weakness and, and talk about it and see how you could address it.
Those are all really good.
Um, one of my things has been communication. Um, I, I really do a strong communication. I think a, a strong leader that can offer support, um, to everyone, uh, everyone across the district, um, and, and knows how to communicate it, I guess, I don't know.
See, it's harder when you go the other way.
Well, I would say kind of...
So, you know, obviously, what, echoing what I'll have said, but, um, two other characteristics is when a decision needs to be made, that the superintendent is not afraid to make it and take a stand, whether it's popular or not, um, along with the fact of, of someone who's compassionate. I, I think that's important. Um, we're not dealing with, with robots in a factory, we're dealing with humans, with feelings, and, and who are all very different. So, I think a, a leader who can, um, show empathy and compassion is important.
And it's funny, because we don't always all agree on everything, but I think that so far, a lot, we're agreeing on this, which is good. Um, you know, I think communication is a really strong attribute that I would personally like to see. Um, you know, I think you can look around the room tonight and identify a lot of different stakeholders from the community, whether it's members of the union, parents, and other community members of the select board. And, uh, you know, there are, you touched on this in, in your question, in the question that I asked about, you know, the way that you would effectively communicate with those people. And I think the other piece of it, and you also mentioned this, is, uh, someone who can advocate for us. Um, similar to Handen and Wilbraham, Long Meadow faces challenges, especially from a revenue perspective, especially from a state aid perspective. And so, you know, having that unique connection with legislators is important, and being able to talk to them and articulate your needs is important. Um, you know, I think the other thing that, you know, I would, I would like to see, and I, you know, I, I think is an important attribute, is someone who, uh, similar to all the other comments that were made, uh, you know, understands the needs of individual children, uh, and is able to develop a plan, uh, to meet those needs on an individual basis, which we're also, you know, so.
Okay. Um, I'm looking for someone with a humane vision of education, uh, someone who's going to stay loyal to and also understands who Horace Mann was and what he fought for on the different, uh, battlefields that he was in. I really like the fact that you've got classroom and administrative experience. I think that's a plus. Uh, the quality of your answers to the questions indicate, you've been there, you've, you've experienced these things. They're not just theoreticals, they're actualities. And, uh, I'll conclude by saying I like the fact that you have a social studies background. In case you don't know, I happen to be biased towards historians. So, all this technology's fine and dandy, but we need to have some historical framework. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you teach with Horace Mann, John?
Well, he's a former classmate.
All right.
Um, okay. I will say, um, we're, uh, I'd be looking for someone that doesn't have to be loved but respected for their decisions, um, someone who's approachable and hands-on, uh, and someone who's forward-thinking, and will identify needs before they're upon us.
Thank you. Can we answer those questions first next time if there was another interview? Find out what the attributes are first. Now, um, I appreciate that. And, and I did have some sense of that from the questions that, um, you asked as a committee and that the, that the search committee had asked as well. Uh, and additionally, I, again, have some sense of this, but are, are there other challenges that await the next superintendent that perhaps we, we didn't talk about tonight?
His salary negotiation.
Let's see. Um, I just think that, as I said before, we have, um, some challenges in our special, our special education, and we would love to see, um, some, um, I don't want to say better numbers, but we want them to be achieving, um, at a higher level. And, um, and then I think we have upcoming, um, we have two middle schools that need renovations, and we need to come up with a plan, working with the community, working with the town to, um, agree on and have something in fruition. Um, and just our budget as well. We have budget, we always have budget problems, and we're going towards the $25 levy limit, which we're frequently reminded of. And, um, we'd like to work with the community and government side to, um, take care of those challenges.
Part of the problem in Long Meadow is, uh, we are a residential community, have very little, we have no industrial or manufacturing tax, uh, properties, and very little commercial. So, uh, we're moving very close to, uh, the full $25 per thousand that Prop 2 and 1/2 imposes on it. I think you're familiar with the effects of Prop 2 and 1/2. Despite that, we have a very strong core of, uh, of people in the community who have children in the school, but also those who had children in the school and they, they choose to remain here. They are very sympathetic to education. There, there is though, a, a limit there on how much fiscal strain you can put on the property tax. So, part of what I would expect a new superintendent to do is have some contact with state representatives, state senators. I think we've got a good delegation, but it's going to require some work. We're going to have to start rethinking how we're going to finance public education, or improve it anyway.
I think Liz touched on the two sort of, two things that really stick out to me, which is, you know, improving achievement for special education students. Uh, and obviously, the middle schools remain a problem. Um, though, the middle schools especially, I think we, you know, we've tried to wrap our heads around and, and try to engage select board on, uh, you know, how we move forward. And, uh, you know, it's, it's come in various iterations. This year, we have a middle school working group that's made a recommendation to kind of take a step back and, and figure that out a little bit better, which, you know, we all seem to agree with. Um, but, you know, they remain a challenge from a, from a, you know, safety perspective, from, you know, learning environment perspective. Um, you know, the other thing that I would say is, and we've done, I think, a pretty good job of approaching this, and, you know, we have really talented teachers and administrators at the elementary level, uh, but continuing to, you know, make sure that our elementary students, uh, are moving towards achieving at high levels, you know, that we're meeting, like I said, meeting the needs of all learners at the elementary level. Um, you know, I think when you look at, and you know this very well, when you look at how our high school does achievement-wise, you know, we're doing among the best in the state, we're one of the highest performing high schools in the Commonwealth, and that's a really incredible thing. But it's, it's, you know, making sure that we're supporting those, the elementary and the middle school levels. I think that's a real, that's a challenge for us, that we, we need to continue to, uh, address. And, you know, the other challenge, of course, and it, it includes the budget piece of this that, that John and Liz talked about, but it's kindergarten. You know, uh, we're one of the, I think we are the only Western Mass community that still continues to charge for, uh, full-day kindergarten. And I know this committee's, you know, committed to ensuring that that's not really the case anymore, and that we do fund it. But, you know, being creative with how we get there, I think is, is an important thing. Um, but making sure we get there is the most important thing.
Gets really hard going this way.
Yeah, it's tough. It's tough sitting in the middle.
Because they've, they've kind of covered everything, you know, that, that we've all talked about and that we all value. So, I mean, I...
I agree. I have to say, when Liz started with one, I thought, oh, good, there's middle schools next, and then there's budget. Okay, we could do that.
And then I thought, there's full-day kindergarten, no one's touched on that yet. So, so it does, and I don't know. Do, do you all have anything else that you want to add that's...
Don't I always have something?
Of course you do.
Um, I guess one thing that, and I think Michael was saying it, but, our resources are totally static. You know, we're, we don't have declining enrollment, we just have flat enrollment. And when we look at projections, it's that way for the foreseeable future in the next 10, 20 years. So, I really want somebody that's going to come in and create a plan, a long-term plan, to, to figure out how we deal with that, because I know the town's trying to do that as well. But, we really need to look at, when our resources aren't going up, how's that going to affect us, you know, five or 10 years from now, you know, to maintain programs. Because if it's static, the state's not giving us more money and costs are going up, we're going to continually lose things potentially, if we don't have a real great plan to deal with it.
Agreed, agreed. Yeah.
All right. Any, anything else that you would like to, to say in closing, or, or any final questions?
No, I think, I, I, I so appreciate the opportunity. Um, it's, it's exciting to be back here, um, literally in the space where I started my public school teaching career. Um, so that's, that's, uh, continues to be an intriguing thing. Um, I think going through the process, through the interviews that you've set up, it, it has caused me, you know, a lot of your thinking sort of crystallizes as a superintendent, and you start to, you know, you're challenged to articulate who you are and what you stand for, and what you would fight for, and what your vision is. And so, uh, however this turns out, I greatly appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate the process, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, I'd like to recommend that we take another five minutes or so, that we can stretch and use facilities, and then we'll come back to, to begin, um, discussions. So, five more minutes. So five more minutes.
Yep. Yep.
He did go to school with Horace Mann.
Yep. Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep.
But I am, and I know we've got a holiday in a week. I'm proposing, the next superintendent is going to work very closely with the principals of our schools. That's who they work with closest, the closest, and the admins. And I would propose a specific meet and greet with those people. And I know, we did it with our last superintendent and we just didn't seem to be able to work that into a schedule this time. I don't know that we even talked about it. So I'd like to propose that idea because I feel like they work the closest with whoever we choose. And I feel like we need to get their thoughts on whoever the candidate, or whichever candidates. And then I would like to propose a site visit.
All right, so why don't we take-
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I'm writing everything down. But so, I guess if we could first discuss your first proposal of having meet and greets with the candidates, with the principals and admin team, and the thoughts of the committee on that.
Well, it wasn't the first one on the video.
Well, the first one was the videos, but he says he can get them to us?
So you'll, we'll do that.
Sure.
So that's checked.
On the videos, I'd like to speak about that.
Sure.
Okay, I'm sorry, then let's back up to the videos.
I think we created a process. We started this back when we received the intention to retire notice from Marie Doyle. We made decisions about finding someone who could run the interview search, et cetera, the background search. We hired this company and we put together a committee from the community, drew lots, and asked people to give up, well, two days, the 2nd of December and then the 12th of December, and give it their best judgment. Now we're talking about adding another hoop to jump through, or to change, or second guess what the committee process so far has given us. And the committee process so far, as I knew up until yesterday, had given us three finalists. And I participated in the 12th of December discussions. And I was very much impressed with the quality of the questions and the seriousness of the attitude of the people who were on that committee. And although I had some doubts about this search before then, I left that meeting on Saturday feeling that we had done a very fine job and we should not now second guess what those people on that committee did. And I'm not just talking about the fact that I was on the second committee, therefore shouldn't second guess it. But all those people made a decision and they gave us three candidates. One of those candidates, for his or for her own reasons, decided not to follow through. That's something we can't control. Some people have made some comments about, "We don't have enough candidates from Massachusetts." Someone said to me, "We don't have any assistant superintendents applying." Well, we can't control who applies. We can encourage people to apply, and we did that. We did that with advertisement, word of mouth, et cetera. It seems to me now there's a proposal to change the rules, and I don't think that's fair.
Well, if I can speak to that a little bit, I'm not looking for a second guess. I'm looking for a second look. You don't-
You didn't have a first look, you know?
This is my first look. This first time I am meeting these candidates on, at this level, is at this interview. I got an hour and 15 minutes with the first candidate and I got an hour and 25 minutes with the second candidate. I now have to, from that limited time, I have to select someone that's going to run the entire school district. I'm not, you don't choose a CEO that way, and I don't want to choose someone who's going to run the district that way. I'd like to take a second look. I'm not second guessing it. I'm not asking to go through all of the other videos. I'm asking to look at how they were, how they spoke in the first round of interviews and then, just as a second point of information.
With all due respect, shouldn't this have been raised earlier? If you didn't like the way the thing was going to unfold, you should have proposed something different.
Well, it didn't, so I'm asking for it now. There's no reason why we have to make a decision right this second.
Now, how about this evening?
There's no reason we have to do that.
Okay, so let's, any other comments about the video process? Russ?
So, it's kind of an alternative to that, maybe a different proposal. So, originally, we had a system where we were going to do two sets of interviews at our level. And one reason I kind of liked that idea is because now we know who they are. So I have specific questions I'd like to ask them. So for Neil, you know, I'd ask things like, "What about central office experience? You don't, you know, have any now, so have you ever worked with, you know, our current superintendent to, you know, learn the budget and those type of things? Or if you haven't, what are you going to do so that you do learn the budget? You know, who are you going to rely, are you going to rely on Mr. Mazza to help you? Or, you know, whatever. With Marty, I'd want to know more about what's the situation at Wilbraham. Obviously, it's in the news and we had a whole bunch of people emailing us. There's probably perfectly valid reasons for that. He really should be probably given a chance to explain the situation, and I think Neil should be given the opportunity to explain the lack of his central office experience. And so, I'd really like to be able to ask more directed questions to those two candidates because these general questions are good to get an overall sense of somebody and what they know. But we haven't talked at all about, you know, what are the potential concerns? Because the obvious ones are Neil hasn't worked in the central office and Marty's coming from a district that's facing some challenges now. So I'd like to ask some questions about those two areas. So that would be another way to do it.
I would be fine, I like that idea as well. I agree. I was looking at these questions, wanting to adjust them after we found out who the candidates were.
Okay, so any other discussion about the video process? I want to try to keep, make sure that I'm not losing anything and everybody's concerns get validated. So if we could just continue on with yours and then I'll get back onto that.
I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to change it from a video-
To a second set of interviews.
To a second set of interviews.
Okay, so, before we go any further with that, do you want to focus on the next parts of your questions or do you want to continue on the second set of interview part?
I don't know, what do you, I don't really, as long as we get answers.
Okay, well, since, since we're, okay, so since we've evolved from video to now another set of interviews, can we have discussion on that? I don't know, Mr. Ray, if you want to weigh in about is that, can you interview candidates and ask them two separate sets of questions? Can we change with a timeline and a process that's been posted for candidates at this point of changing it? Can you please, you know, as our search representative, give some answers there before we have further discussion?
I'll try to do my best. All I can rely on is 40-plus years of doing superintendent searches and commissioners and state commissioners and so forth. I think one of the things that you've got to be careful, and it's just a yellow flag here, is that if you set out a process and you've got to respect the committee, you know, process, that's what we told the candidates, this, you know, we're going to go through a committee, the video and so forth. And if you go outside that process, you just need to be very respectful to the people that have participated because they have given up a lot of time and energy. And whether it's a committee, you know, a search committee and then you move it to, you know, to you folks, I've done a lot of different ways. But I think the candidates probably would expect that you might be making a decision. And so, if you're not making the decision tonight and you're planning to go outside that process as you established, then I want to be able to explain to it why. And if it's, if it's some specific follow-up questions, I've got to be able to address that so it's not look like we're stringing them on and we're going outside the process. So I think, can you ask some specific questions to one candidate and not the other? I think you can do that, but it not a long list. You know, I think what you want to do is to be fair to the candidates. That's all any candidate wants, is a fairness, you know, piece and the objectivity. And I think that if you would come up with maybe three, if you go down that road, and I'm not saying that's a good road, but if you go down that road, then I think you ought, it should be a little bit shorter. You've kind of taken them through the wringer here. They're both said they were sweating by the time they got out of here that they felt they were being drilled. But all candidates feel that way. You know, I feel that way when I interview. But, and everybody goes home saying, "I wish I would have remembered this or I would remember that." I mean, that's just human nature. But I think what you want to do is come up with maybe, you know, three or four other, you know, general questions for both of them. So you've got something to evaluate them from, and then maybe something specific to each candidate, you know, so that you can look at it. But I wouldn't go through a long list of questions because we want to present this to them. They're both, you know, fine individuals and they're fine candidates. And I think, you know, it's like any search, only one person's going to get the job. And I think we want to be able to say why we're, you know, they've gone through an interview, they've gone through the video, they've gone, you know, it's a long process. And now they probably felt that, you know, they've hit the final mark here. And I want to be able to present that to the candidates, there's just some follow-up to that. And if you step out and that wasn't part of your process, I don't want them to become alarmed.
Let me just speak for a second. You kind of touched on the fact that you thought that they might think that we're trying to, we're going to make a decision tonight. We have always spoken about, we've always said that we have the right to consider site visits after this meeting tonight. We have always said that. So I'm hoping that-
Yeah, it's been an option, yeah.
We've always had that as an option. We've talked about it every meeting. So I'm hoping that we're not going to disappoint a candidate or anyone if we're not going to make a decision tonight.
Yeah. Sometimes a candidate is called, you may be the lead candidate, but depending on the, you know, the community visit, you know, and that's how it's, you know, how it's couched. And, you know, so that they, you know, candidates normally don't want people wandering their district if it's a 50-50 deal because, you know, they just really don't like that, you know, primarily because it upsets their community and their process. They don't have a problem coming into their district and their community, you know, they really don't. But if it's a 50-50 deal, you know, that's, you know, that's not necessarily treating, if you're calling this a CEO, it's not really a CEO, you know, way to do things.
All right, so can we have, John?
Can I ask you to clarify? You're talking about re-interviewing the two candidates we had tonight.
I'm saying that's-
Or are you saying the six?
No, I'm talking about the two. That's what she brought up, that she had some specific questions that she wanted to ask some people or have another, you know, interview. I was not talking about the six. I was talking about the two. And I think that's what she was asking.
So in regards to-
I'm not necessarily saying that's what we ought to do, but if you do it, this-
No, I just want to be sure we're talking about the same number.
Right.
So, so furthering that discussion on-
The second interviews?
Having a second round interview for both of these candidates. You know, as Mr. Ray indicated, perhaps three to four general questions and one or two specific questions for each one. Can I hear what the committee is wanting?
I don't even, I mean, I don't know if we would need, I feel like we would be making, we've come up with our general questions, kind of. I feel like we would really just want to make a few, there's a few specific questions and I think that we would want to touch on some.
Yeah, another way, I could obviously just call them and have them submit something in writing, but my best guess, if you're going to do that, then you might as well be face to face.
Yeah.
There's body language and different things involved.
Liz, did you have something or-
I was just going to ask if it needed to be face to face or if it could be written down.
Okay, so Russ?
So I would think, I mean, we don't want these candidates, you know, doing three different days of activities for us. So if we did something like this, I would think we'd do the meet and greets with administration, site visit, and then we do a quick round of interviews which basically address, you know, really what I want to do is give them an opportunity to address some of the concerns that have come up in the last two days, which are all pretty much the same basic concerns, and let them respond so the community can hear the other side of the equation. And really out of fairness to them, because right now if we hire somebody, either candidate, it's going to be kind of an uphill battle to get over the initial, "Well, what about all those things you never asked?" And so, I'm not saying we ask all of the community's questions, but I think we should ask two or three of them, for both of them. Because I think they both have some pretty obvious questions that we didn't get to ask tonight.
Okay, I'm going to ask, hold on a second, John. I'm just going to ask, so that we don't start muddying water with adding in the meet and greet and the site visit for the moment, and I understand where you're going with that, but for the moment, can we just stay on the re-interview part? John?
Well, I'm just questioning why if people had questions, they didn't ask them.
Because we were told-
At the end of the formal period, we said, "Do you have any questions?" And that was the time to go ahead and fire away. Or you didn't have them then?
That was really a chance, my question to the candidate at the end was really questions for, that they had of us. That wasn't a time where we were going to start throwing out questions that we hadn't previously discussed or agreed upon. So, in all fairness, that's, you know, that was the procedure for this evening that we had agreed upon. Liz, did you have anything you wanted to add? Your feelings either way about having a second interview process?
I'm, I agree and disagree. I agree that it would be great to hear two sides of the story since there's so much hearsay about certain things. And it would be great to hear from the candidates their perspective, like you said. But then again, I don't want to be stringing them along, you know, over the holiday and making them feel like that everything that they went through was basically worthless. So, I'm just a little conflicted about that.
Because of the timing? Because, I mean, I mean, we face a holiday. I mean, my thought is to get this done before the 24th.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to, we have, well, I don't know that we can't. I mean, we've got three days.
What, what board's going to be here?
My only thing is, let me just give you some thought, some thoughts here, is that I know there's quite a few administrators who are in both camps, you know, because, you know, I was listening now, so there were some folks that were coming to these open forums. So they were open for anybody, were they not?
Correct.
You know, so you could have had administrators who could have come, you know, to, and there was some, because I visit with some. Can't remember everybody's name because I'm the guy from out of town, but there were some folks there. I think you have to be able to realize as a board that no matter whom you choose, the problem with social media, and I deal with it every day, you know, on candidates, there's always rumors, there's always some blogs, there's always that out there. So if you think you're going to be able to answer everybody's question out there that might have about a particular candidate, that's probably never going to happen. If you have some specific things, that's one thing. But you're always going to hear something out there in the social media. And I think in order to be fair to the candidates, if you're going to go down this road, it needs to be a very small, quick window, you know, to them. One, I want to make sure that they, they don't feel that we're trying to string along or chase them away too. And it's a two-way street. These candidates, always when you walk away, they got to think, "Okay, is this a board I want to deal with? Is this a community I want to deal with?" So it's, it is a two-way street. And so we don't want to go too far down that road if you're going to do it. And I think your specific questions need to be really very two to three, whatever, or otherwise it's going to look like we're, you know, that we're not doing our due diligence.
All right, Michael?
So my question is, and I certainly see the value in sort of asking those follow-up questions because I think the concerns the community's raised on both candidates and even on the candidate that dropped out are all valid. So knowing that, taking a step back and looking at where we are right now on December 17th, next week is Christmas, the following week is New Year's, we're on vacation, that leaves a sort of, it'd be one thing if we had three full weeks where we were actually actively doing stuff. That's actually two weeks where we're not doing anything because school, the school's so closed, people are on vacation. So how, I mean, without making it seem as though we're trying to rush this because I know that all of us are trying to be as thoughtful as possible, what is our proposed sort of timeline for doing this? Because I think there, like Mr. Ray said, and like Russ said, there's, you know, an element of fairness to the candidates at the same time while we have to acknowledge the concerns and needs of the community. It is a two-way street in this.
Let me just hear from Michelle and then-
Okay, so I, I support the idea of having some targeted questions specific to the candidates now that we know who they are because I think it's, I think we have a good general idea of how they, you know, feel about education and different systematic approaches, but we don't have specific questions to the candidates. So I would prefer to do that. I think, you know, the timing and the holidays is unfortunate, but I think, I don't like rushing a decision and I don't like, I feel like we're cramming for a test and just, you know, I don't like doing that.
Okay, Russ?
So we have a meeting scheduled for January 4th, so basically two weeks. And that's basically roughly the timeline. We have the principal search at Williams. So I think if we schedule it for that night, try to do the interviews and then we make a selection that night, it's not ideal for the public necessarily or for all of us because obviously it's the holiday season and it's not great for the candidates either. But it's two weeks and that's what we did in the other search as well. So I don't think that that would be, I mean, both of them have indicated that they're only applying here, they both really want to work here, and I think all of us would like to work with one of them as well. So it's really just, you know, we tried to do everything on that January 4th night, is what I would propose.
Gary, can I hear your professional input about waiting from December 17th till January 4th in keeping candidates waiting?
Well, normally you don't do that. I mean, I understand the holiday part, believe me, I do. The, it's just when you're a, and I'm just going to speak on the one side because the one individual works in a district and that's always hard on them too because they get people coming up to them and talking to them and that, you know, that's hard. But when you're a sitting superintendent in a community, your collateral starts going down, you know, a little bit because, you know, you're interviewed out here and you're in another district, you're saying you want to work in that district, you know, "What about us?" You know, and so I think you've got to be a little bit, you can put yourself in both shoes here. So I would prefer, and I think if there's any way at all, I think there's a possibility you could lose somebody, one or the other. I think there's always a chance of people thinking, "Well, we got so-and-so here that works in the district." Well, after a while, they may get cold feet too. And particularly the one outside the district can get cold feet. So I think there's, there is some chance that you would lose somebody. And as a board, you always got to be prepared on that. And I think you've got to be a little bit careful you don't have your process starting that you're going outside the process and then you're going to have to lose a candidate. So if there's any way possible to do this prior to the holidays, and I don't see it as cramming, you know, because you've already had, you've had your search committee and they've put in a lot of time. You've had the interview here in the public, and if we're only looking for a few, a few things specific, you can probably have those questions done in a half hour.
Hold on, Liz and then Kim.
So two questions. Jan, I know that you're going away.
Uh huh.
And what date is that?
I leave on Saturday.
This Saturday?
And then, would it be possible, because this meeting was really scheduled to go to 10:00, if we talk right now and come up with our key questions and ask them back in, at 9:30? I know, sorry.
No, you know, Liz, I was, part of me was saying the same thing. I mean, I didn't realize you were leaving this Saturday, I thought it was next Saturday. I apologize, but like-
That's okay.
Part of me was saying, I mean, I know it's not ideal, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we have next week.
But I think, and just to interrupt you, I think with open meeting law, if we post tomorrow, the soonest we could do is Tuesday, so that we're limited already to Tuesday and Wednesday. So, you know, just to keep that in mind.
Do we have to follow that with any sort of site visit as well?
Yes.
We don't?
It wouldn't have, wouldn't be a posted meeting. Usually they don't, you wouldn't all go on a site visit?
Well, but if a quorum wanted to go on a site visit, then it has to be posted.
Then I would have to.
Well, that would depend, I think we're just going and not deliberating. I will check with our attorney.
But if you ask questions or anything, that would be deliberated.
Okay, so.
I think on a site visit, if you're going to do a site, by the way, I don't have very many site visits anymore. They used to be really popular a number of years ago, but with all the internet and all interviewing, I think if you're going on a site visit, you need to determine what your objective is and what you plan on trying to find out. If it's just to walk down the street like the old Mayberry and talk to Floyd Barber, you know, that's probably not going to really, really give you a lot of information. So I think you've got to say, "Okay, if we're going to do an onsite visit, you know, what's our objective, you know, and who do we want to talk to and line some of that up? If you want to talk to some administrators or former board members or..." I think you've got to put, you know, your list together and objective and then decide who's going to go on the, you know, onsite visit. I think if you go on a site visit, if it's off, if it's not the internal person here, then I think you've got to decide who's going to go and what that report's going to look like. And more than likely, if you're going to go, you're probably going to have to make a decision who's going to get the job before you do an onsite visit.
I just have a question about site visits because I don't know anything about them. How, you know, you talked about like a collection of sort of people that we would have to line up. I mean, typically in your experience, how much notice do you give to that collection of people and let them know you're coming? Because, I mean, at this point, it looks like we're dealing with, if we have to post, just two days and then we, and then nobody's around at Wolf Swamp and nobody's around in Hampton and Wilbraham until January 4th, which would be the same day as our meeting.
Which is only one week of school, really. And if we're out of school for a week and a half.
Right. So it's, I mean, so realistically, we've got two days that we can line this thing up and is that possible? And that's, I'm not asking that question to say we shouldn't do it. I'm asking that question because logistically it seems very difficult.
I think you do it when you come back. I mean, it's, it wouldn't be fair for them, I don't think, to try and set it up next week. Because they want to line it up too.
Sure, yeah, they want to look good.
So with respect to the idea that you decide who would be the sole candidate before you do the site visits, would we be doing a second interview first, deciding after the second? I mean-
Well, I've never seen that here. Every client I've had, they go to the site visit for the finalists. Because if you already know who you're picking, there's no point in going to the site. So I've always seen you go to two or three sites, just check them out, come back here. Now, a lot of times you just hear positive things because they're not bringing you to the people that don't like them usually. But I think you get an idea of, you know, is there tension in the building? Are things going well in the building? Do people look happy? How are, you know, you get a lot of, kind of when somebody's sitting in front of you, are they sweating or are they calm? You know, are they fidgeting or are they? So it's, I think it's that type of perspective. But I also have, I mean, I've only had two days to really look at this, so I haven't called any of the references. I don't know if any of, you were able to.
Let me just address that. Are we to call references or is that something that the company has done?
Well, that's kind of what we've done. I think when you get down to, the trouble with, which is on references, you know, with these particular candidates is that, is everybody, I mean, we've already, you know, done some reference checks, you know, as a firm, and we've kind of went through that with the search committee. Does that mean everybody's going to just start calling references, you know, to people? And what kinds of questions are you going to, you know, ask these references? I think you've got to be careful you go- I think you've got to be careful you go down that road of how you're going to do reference checks as a board. I mean, obviously there's internet checks and those sort of things you can do, but I think that if, I'm just using you, Russ, since you brought it up. I mean, if you're out there checking and then we have Michelle checking a bunch of references and we have somebody else, pretty soon someone's going to hang up or the other side of the coin is candidates going to say enough, you know, I've got enough, you know, questions, people calling my district, they're going to walk away whether they're in-house or not, you know. I just think that after a while, they're just not going to want to, you know, put up with that. And just think about it, if you were in their shoes, I mean, if you're the target and you're the candidate out there and you have everybody just, you know, a held or skilled or calling, who are they calling, what kind of questions are they asking and whether you're going to get a straight scoop anyway from them, you know. So I just think that normally at this particular point in time, you're not making those kind of calls, you know. If you've got one or two people on the committee or on a board that wants to, say, designate those people to make a couple of calls and the rest of the board says that's fine, that's okay. But I think you've got to, as a board, make sure that you're all in agreement what you're going to do on that. Otherwise, you're going to have, some board members are going to make calls and you're going to have some that's not and it's just going to be too much out of control. I think what it's going to do is set a precedent or at least an appearance, it shouldn't be a precedent, an appearance that this board is not very well structured and it's just, you know, held or skilled or, and I just don't think that that's sending a good positive note. So if you're going to call on references, I think you all should agree how it's going to be done, who's going to do it, and then have some kind of report on it.
Like, so did you call the references? Your team already called all the references?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they come from...
And we've gone beyond references too. There's a lot of people in this business will make comments and tell us, you know, something about the candidate, but they don't want their name on any piece of paper. And sometimes you get the best information from people that don't want their name on a piece of paper because, you know, they don't want it coming back on them. I'm just, it's plain, you know, English to you, but, you know. So we have called on, you know, those references and beyond those references. So if there's additional information that you would want, our search firm can do that, you know. And we, if there's a, hey, we want to chase down this rumor, you know, or something they want to clarify, we know we can do that. But I think as a board, you know, you're going in some pretty rough waters if you're just saying, hey, let's just start calling people and some board members do it and some don't. That's not the signal you want to send, I don't think.
If that's something we want to do, I agree that we probably should designate somebody to kind of report back, you know.
Or you're going to have us do it too.
Right.
Which we've already done.
But you've already done.
Yeah, we've already done that work, but if there's something you want traced down, we certainly can do that and report that to you. It's up to you.
I have a question.
Yes, John?
Are we in effect saying we have a failed search? Because I don't think it was a failed search.
Nobody said that.
I think, well, can I finish? Thank you. I think we've got some people in the community who didn't like one, two, or three of the candidates that were produced by the process, a process that was fully supported up until Saturday by all the people who were involved in it. And there was sincere debate. Now, some people who are not on the committee, outside people, are floating rumors on mass live and who knows what's going on over the airways. But I was presented with a letter tonight here by, I assume, someone in the community as if it had some rigging port. It didn't. However, when I left this hall here on Saturday, we had three candidates, solid candidates. So I think the search worked. It produced a choice. And I think we ought to look at that, vote it up or down. If we want to say none of the above, none of the two, fine. Then you're going to have to form a whole new committee. And I'll tell you right now, no one who applied to the first, for the first opening is going to bother applying the long battle. So, and there are people on this committee, we're talking about a failed search. I heard those words used. So you're not going to use those words anymore, but is it still descriptive of the situation?
Well, you have two good candidates. I'm just telling you from my experience, you got two good candidates. It's just a matter of choice what you want to do. If you want extra information, it's fine, a search firm can do that. But you do have two good candidates and based upon my experience, you do. Sometimes you get internal or people that are familiar with the district, sometimes you don't. But you have two good candidates.
Rose, you have your hand up.
I wanted to correct something. Some of the emails we've received were from people on the preliminary search committee. So some of those emails we all received did come from them. I guess the second point, and I'm not the one who said it was a failed search, although I would say I really wanted three candidates. And whether we had three candidates or not, I guess is something I'll leave up to debate. But at this point, I just want to correct that it wasn't just people from outside. It actually was some of the people on that.
Some of the people on there. I'll concede that. Very few. The vast majority was happy with it.
Or they didn't say something to us.
And can I ask to clarify? You said we may have had three? Or did we have three?
I'm not going to talk about that publicly.
Well, then...
But we are going to talk about that at some point.
So now what's happening? We had three candidates.
We did.
Now say you don't want to discuss that?
Out of respect for the other candidate, I'm not going to here.
Okay, Kim? So I'm just, no one has declared there's a failed search on camera in this group right now, okay?
The language has been used earlier.
We're not talking about earlier, we're talking about right now. I'm trying to be in the moment of what we're doing right now. We have just interviewed two very solid candidates, okay?
We have no memory.
No one has said that we don't have any solid candidates. All I'm asking is for a little bit more information. We found out two days ago specifically who they were. We weren't really allowed to tailor our questions to the specific candidates and these candidates are very different. They have very different experience and they both offer some very unique qualities to this district. And I feel like making a decision after two days, it's just too rushed. I feel like we should be able to meet them again, ask them a few questions. I don't know how long it's been since you've been on an interview, but when you go on an interview and you're in the final stage, sometimes they call you back the next day. It's not uncommon to go to a final interview and come back for another interview.
So my question is, if that's what we want to do, which, you know, I'm comfortable doing if that's what the committee wants, and I think that you're right, there are questions that, I mean, the questions we had were tailored, or they were not tailored to the specific candidate. We wrote them well in advance of knowing who the finalists were, which is why Neil got a question about how familiar he was with the district, you know. But my, I mean, you know, again, what is our, what is, if we're going to go down that road, and I think we need to make that determination, you know, without wasting any more time about this particular discussion, I think that we all have kind of an idea about what we want to do, we then need to focus our energy on what's that timeline look like and what's the most fair to every stakeholder, the ones in this room and the ones that interviewed and the ones at home watching. And is that bringing them back on January 4th? And if that's what we decide, then okay. If it's doing it next Tuesday or next Wednesday, although Janet's not here, okay. But we, you know, I think we need to kind of get to a point of consensus around what we want to do rather than debating what happened over, you know, over the search so far. So...
So my initial proposal was going to try and get it in before the 24th. I mean, when I thought about this in my head, I didn't realize you were leaving on this Saturday, I apologize. I don't know, are you out of the country type thing?
Yes.
Okay.
How's your roaming?
Because, well, no, because I know that we've made accommodations.
Maybe file for reimbursement.
We've made a, other combinations have people...
Are you gone all the time through the holidays?
Yes, I'm leaving the country on the 19th and I will be back on the 30th.
So Skype or something's out.
It can be done. You just can't vote.
Right, which that's not going to help if it's a 3-3 vote.
Well, that also doesn't mean, yeah, so, okay.
So...
Why couldn't she vote?
Just the AG's guidance around electronic participation.
I voted over.
Oh, wait, I don't think we can do without the chair.
Right, because the chair is not physically present. We are allowed remote participation, but, and there has to be a quorum, but the chair has to be present in order to vote. So, and that's fine. I mean, I have no problems. I'm the one who made holiday plans. If this is what the committee is wanting to do, personally I don't, if I were in either candidate's position, I personally wouldn't want it to go on to January 4th, knowing that, you know, I wanted to enjoy the holidays with my family and not have the continued rumor mill and discussions going on through social media that have taken place in just two days. And my personal fear is that if we prolong it that long, I would worry that one or both might choose to withdraw for personal reasons as well. And that's, you know, whatever the committee decides in terms of how they'd like to move forward, that's fine with me. That's just my two cents.
So...
So do we have a motion? Are we to the point where you're wanting to call for a motion, Michael, or?
Well, the committee doesn't think you can make that decision tonight is what I'm hearing.
Well, no, I think we can make a motion to...
I think he means the final decision.
I mean, a final decision to somebody.
To a point.
No, I don't, I'm talking about a motion of whether we wish to have a second round of interviews and a date for those interviews.
Does anybody want to try it tonight?
Pardon?
Does anybody want to try to do this tonight?
I don't know that it's fair at this point to call candidates at 8:30 and ask, can you come in in an hour so we can revisit? I don't know that that's necessarily fair to them.
Yeah, but it's not fair to wait until January 4th.
Like I said, I have no problem with you all conducting the meeting. The thing is, if you conduct the meeting and I'm not present, which is fine.
I know.
And you take a vote, then that vote would become null and void and we'd have to wait to vote to January 4th anyway, to revote.
If it's tied.
If you took a vote and it was a tied vote.
That's a fail.
It's a failed vote to recommend one or the other for superintendent.
Well, yeah.
No, we can't predict that now. I mean, it's...
You what?
You can't predict that now. I mean, that could happen now if one of us abstains. I mean, it's...
Point of information. Can we have a vote tonight on one of the candidates?
It's not sounding that that's...
If someone nominates a candidate, and let's say they're doing it in good faith, and the rest of the committee doesn't even second it, that candidate is dead in the water. All right? And then we go to the other one and we're going to vote. No, we don't want to, we don't want them now. But we're going to say, hang on in there.
I don't...
I don't like the way this is playing out. There's a wing in this committee now that seems committed to, we're not going to let this happen tonight. And we may let it happen on Christmas Eve or winter solstice, whatever your preference. But it's not, it's not going to be in any way consistent with the process we set up initially.
I was under the impression that there was no firm answer that we were going to be giving tonight.
The proposals before us.
What?
The proposals before us, sample motions included nominating a candidate, we're having this discussion. So we're having this discussion. But this discussion is undermining the whole idea of having a candidate tonight.
During the entire process, at every meeting when we discussed this process and the December 17th date, we always left the idea open for site visits. No one said that before we did a site visit, we had to pick a candidate.
I didn't say I was opposed to site visits. Well, you started off with wanting to look at film or video.
Well, I want a second look.
And then you went to the next option. So now we're on site visits. Is that the crucial?
John, I feel like we're getting off task here.
Okay, yes. So let's go back to, you had indicated that you feel that if this is what we want to do, we need to make a decision, move forward because there are other questions that need to be addressed.
I mean, it appears to me that the committee has additional questions that I think, you know, that at least members of the committee want to ask. And, you know, certainly I think we all have additional sort of individual questions about particular situations that, you know, probably for the community's benefit should be answered. That, you know, and so I guess the question is, when do we do that? That's, I mean, that's my question.
And I don't think it would be that big of a deal right now if Janet wasn't going away from Saturday.
Right, well, exactly.
You can remove me from the equation.
I just, I just feel like, nothing against Janet.
No, no, no.
You know that...
I know, and that's why I said, remove me from the equation. That's fine.
But I feel like we have a responsibility to continue the process if we feel we need to continue the process.
Okay.
And if we, if we need to do it as soon as possible, that as soon as possible happens to be December 22nd, which is also the winter concert at the high school. But I'm just...
You don't know that you need to do it. You haven't talked to either candidate about that. Potentially they would feel differently and potentially want to wait until after the holidays. I don't know, we're speaking for them and we shouldn't be.
You know, I never thought about that.
And I think you need to take that...
I was trying to mention that. We're making these decisions without talking, thinking about if the candidates are even going to be available. I mean, at this particular point, you know, I don't know if one of them may be on a trip, you know.
Well, so in that case, Mr. Ray, would you be able to, you know, reach out to both of them this evening to help us make our decision?
Perhaps could you...
Sure, I've got their numbers right here.
Perhaps do you want to step out and see if, to express to vote that the committee would like...
I'm sure they're watching at home. I'm sure they'll be anticipating your call.
But to let them, but to let them know that, you know, we're talking about a second look and trying to be respectful and...
Yeah.
Knowing the fact, you know, that we want to be respectful of them and their plans and not keep them hanging, would they be available, what did you say, the date was the 22nd?
The 22nd, or would they be...
Or would they want to wait until January 4th?
I'm not going to be here for the 22nd.
Okay, so John will not be here either.
Okay, so that kind of narrows it down a little more.
That's an odd number.
So if you're not making a decision tonight, and if he's not here, then you're gone, then I guess I've got to ask him if they can hang on for the January 4th.
No, there still would be a quorum.
Okay.
Could he?
And could John vote remotely?
John could vote remotely?
Yes, I believe so.
Because, John, do you have, are you going to be in the states or out of states?
I'll be in the state, the Commonwealth.
Would you be able to...
Phone in.
Phone in for a conference call to have a vote?
Do I have to?
You don't have to, but then you would not have a vote.
I prefer to vote tonight. That's what I came to do.
Okay. Check on both dates, please, Mr. Ray.
22nd or January 4th? Is January 4th okay with everybody else?
Yeah, we have a scheduled meeting.
Because we have a meeting scheduled for then anyway.
So it's the 22nd, possible phone in or mail your vote in or whatever you need to do there.
Right. Just, just check on both of those dates if you don't mind.
Yeah, I don't mind doing that.
No, we're trying to be respectful of their time. It's the holiday time. We don't want to...
Yeah, and I think the sooner the better.
If you want to use that other room, so backtracking to where we started, Kim, you had proposed doing meet and greets between the two candidates and the admin team. We've not discussed that part yet, so while Mr. Ray is making those calls...
You want me to talk about it?
We also asked them if they want to do it?
Yeah, I guess so.
I've met them.
Well, I know you have. So my, you know, it's, I have, I just feel like you work directly with this person, you're going to work directly with this person. I mean, the thing is, you guys know them already. I don't know that Taylor Rye does or any of the other principals in the district.
Well, you have to manage the audience. You might want to ask them, because they probably would enjoy a informal, although they may have been here already this evening at 4 o'clock.
Well, so, the way I'm understanding and have understood it happened with Marie was that she had kind of an informal discussion with the admin team. And then the admin team came in front of the school committee and had an off-camera discussion but still open to the public.
That it just wasn't broadcast and...
It just wasn't broadcast for...
Recorded?
Right.
So Marie Pratt has the best memory of anybody that I know. And I think that's how she sat with us as an admin team.
And I'm just wondering if that is something that we kind of... And I'm just wondering if that is something that we kind of missed, missed the ball on. Like, I mean, it's okay to admit that we made a mistake, and if we did, let's correct it right now and say that we need to do this, or it wasn't valuable, we don't need it, or. I just want to bring the question up.
I would encourage, I mean, we have four of our administrators here, so Taylor wouldn't be able to weigh in, and Tom Landers wouldn't be able to weigh in, and I don't know if you include Mark, I mean, Mark wouldn't be able to weigh in, Donna left. So, I mean, I guess that's technically a quorum. So I, I would defer to you on what you want with my.
I think one of the key differences is that the other candidates, we didn't know them. A majority of us know both candidates, and they have worked with both candidates at some point in our careers. So the last time we went through the process, there were three candidates of which we did not know or have worked with either, any of them. So I think that's a different component than what we're experiencing this time around.
And so maybe if Catherine were in the mix, we might be saying, talking a little differently.
It might be different, correct.
But because everybody's familiar with the two candidates, we feel okay, you, you feel okay with not having a meet and greet and then talking with the school committee?
I do too. I feel like I could work with either one of them.
I'm getting nods out there, too.
I believe two nods out there the same direction, so, okay, so that's, takes care of that.
Okay, so, so we're seeing no need for admin meet and greet, is what's been agreed upon? I just want to make sure I'm, I'm keeping up with this. And then, Kim, you had proposed site visit.
Right, and I mean, I guess the site visit would, would be some, and I'm torn with the idea of a site visit because you are kind of meeting who they want you to meet. And I, I have, I'm not experienced in this, and I don't know what site visits are, entail. And, you know, if he's saying that they don't do them anymore, they don't, who's they? In Massachusetts?
Well, I will say that, that from what, what Gary and Ryan, you know, in my conversations with Gary, and I know Ryan addressed this with the search committee Saturday, is he said, meet and greet, or, site visits had their place prior to internet access and social media. Again, they both did acknowledge the fact that it's set up with who the candidate wants you to meet, not necessarily who you want to meet. So they said more and more of the districts that they are employed by are no longer doing them.
I will say that when Michael Sullivan was preparing to, when he was a finalist in Gil Montague, they did come here and Jen Jester and I, and were you there too?
I, yes.
Okay, we all were interviewed by their delegation.
I was too, as a parent.
Oh, yeah. You know, so obviously the circumstances there were quite different. They were a level four district, and they had a lot of concerns about who they were bringing in at the time, because they were this close to the state coming in and saying, we need to take a closer look here. But that being said, if it's, if, I'm amenable if that's what we want to do, I mean, obviously, I think we, we've, with at least one of these candidates, we worked pretty closely with and know, you know, actually have seen, you know, like exactly the work that he does when he's come here and demonstrated and shown us his MCAS results. He's brought in his student presentations. We know the teachers in his building. I mean, obviously, if we're going to do them, we have to do them with both of them.
No, we don't.
Oh, we don't?
Legal counsel has said that.
Okay.
Our legal counsel has said that we can do site visits on one, two, or all three.
Okay, I mean, so the question is, do you want to go to Wolf Swamp? And if you feel like you don't need to go to Wolf Swamp?
Field trip!
Field trip to Wolf Swamp. Do we want to go to, do we want to go to Hampden Wilbraham?
Well, I, I just was posing the question for the group.
Yeah, and I'm, no, I agree. I'm just, I'm just trying to like flesh it out a little more.
Russ wants to weigh in, and then, bless you.
Bless you, Kathy.
Wants to weigh in.
We did a site visit for the principal's search, so I think it's going to look kind of odd if we don't do it for the superintendents. And as far as Wolf Swamp, I mean, I'm real familiar with Blueberry, but when I've gone through Wolf Swamp, checking out the facility, I've never really gone there to look at their programs and how things are running, so I wouldn't mind going to Wolf Swamp, too.
We did site visits on principals?
We did, and what I want to say about them is you get a feeling for the school culture when you visit, or the building culture, and how folks are received, and so you, they do set up meetings with folks from, you know, every genre, custodians, pay professionals, teachers, you know, co-administrators. And you, people are incredibly honest in a, in a closed-door setting. But the other thing is, you see folks, you see them walking through hallways, and you see how their staff responds to them and says hello to them, or, or, or they don't. So you can kind of glean by that kind of thing, the way they're perceived and received by their, their staff, which is important.
And then I guess my other question is, if we're going to say that the committee's going to do site visits, when, and my, again, my only experience with this is when Gil Montague came, they sent, I think, three of their members. Do we want to designate three members to go and do the site visit the same way we, like, if we do reference checks?
It should be the same three, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we designate, would it be the people who are on, I mean, obviously, this takes you out of the mix, but I mean, would it be the people, the members that were on the search committee? Would it be three members that were not on that search committee?
Well, the first thing we could look at is how many people can do January 4th in a day, because that probably excludes some of us.
Or December 22nd.
We can do well.
You're going to, you're going to have holiday concerts and all kinds of stuff, which we get, just, I mean, which might be fun to see and see them interacting, but you may not be able to get a good conversation going.
So at this point, and this is my just jumping in, trying to figure this out logistically. So we have Mr. Ray asking the candidates if they can meet on the twenty-second.
Twenty-third or fourth. No, we didn't give him the twenty-third.
Whatever that was for the second round, but then we're still, now we're saying we're still going to ask them to wait until January 4th to do site visits. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, I was just saying, if that's the date. I mean, personally, I would prefer if we're all there to vote on the superintendent.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I know we disagree sometimes, but I would prefer to have everybody there, if we can. So it would make sense if we're, if we end up on the 4th, because it is better to have the chair there, it's better to have John there, then it would make sense to do the site visits during the day that day, and just get it all out of the way, and then report back to us on the 4th. We do the interviews, and then we make a decision one way or the other.
Now, and, and let me just pose the question. I know he's, he's still talking to the candidates.
He's talking for a while, too.
If they come back with a concern that, you know, of hanging out till January 4th, does that change anyone's mind about whether they wish to move forward with a site visit or not? And I'm just trying to play devil's advocate. I'm not saying one is better than the other. I just would hate to lose either one of these candidates.
Which, you know, not to like interject, there is, I think there is a chance, and I don't want to, like, I know there's sort of like an elephant in the room that nobody's mentioning, but, I mean, Hampden Wilbraham is, their school committee's meeting an executive session right now. So, I mean, obviously, we don't know what they're talking about, but there is a possibility they counter, you know, they come back and, and offer more money, or they're deciding to go in a different direction, but, you know, that's not to say that we should, you know, we're making a decision about anybody, but I think we do have to realize that, you know, there is that X factor there, that, you know, the longer this hangs out there, the more the possibility that we, you know, lose a candidate exists. But, I mean, again, I think all of this would be, yeah.
I mean, I, so I sit in that seat a lot interviewing for, before school committees, but I look at it totally different. I mean, I give a list of every single client I have, and I say, call them off. Give the phone number for every single one, and if you don't call me back in one week, two weeks, I mean, it's, now, it's a little different because it's not my only client, you know, and for them, this is their only shot right now. But I have a totally different perspective of references. You give me a reference, I'm going to call the reference.
Sure.
You know, so I know, you know, I have a disagreement, I guess, on that, but I've had two days, I haven't been able to do the internet stuff except for the third candidate that dropped out, because I didn't know much about her, so I looked into her a lot.
Right.
But then I didn't spend as much time with these two, so.
Right, and, and I'm not suggesting that we don't spend the time to do that work. I just, you know, I kind of wanted to just kind of mention that, you know, when we talk about when we're doing things, because I think all of these things we're doing is important, and I think we've kind of, at least a majority of the board has reached some consensus around these important things, that we, you know, we are up against the clock, and so, you know, not with regard to like, sort of the quickness that we make a decision, but with the external factors that exist around that decision that we need to make. And, you know, Kim, I agree, this is the most important decision we're going to make as a committee, and the timing is terrible. I think that, I mean, and that's really the unfortunate thing about this. If we were do, if we had decided that the, the search was going to take place that first week in January, we wouldn't have any of these issues. But we decided it's taking place tonight, and Christmas is next week.
Michelle, you want to weigh in on any of this?
I, I, a lot of my feelings are being expressed as we go around. I think, obviously, I hear a lot of feedback from the community, and I think I've heard things, you know, lots of things in the last two days, but the one thing I think I've heard the most from the community is to please slow down. And that's how I was feeling, too. I think, you know, in terms of having the search committee that we had, I was on the second day, but I received materials right when we were interviewing the candidates, and I didn't have a lot of time to look through the materials. I think that for Kim and the other people that weren't in there, this must be really difficult to make a decision based on two days of, of information and an hour and fifteen minutes of an interview. So I support giving them more time to make a decision, and I actually would like more time for myself to make a decision. I think another piece of advice that I definitely got along the way was to do site visits, so I support a site visit as well. The problem of the timing is, is, like I said, really unfortunate. But the way I am, I like to think about the decision. I don't like to make a quick one, so that's where, that's what I would like.
We haven't heard from you lately. Oh, sorry, I didn't know you were eating.
I'm trying to get some energy. I think I said before, like, I'm torn because, you know, I think we could ask them a couple more questions, but, like, what if they, what if they came back tonight and said, no way, we won't out tonight? Would you be willing to make a decision?
Both of them?
No.
The both.
No.
What I would say is.
And then you lost them both?
Well, if two weeks is too long, it means they don't really want to be here.
No.
Not enough. You know, I mean, it's not great they have to wait two weeks, but if it was two months, I'd say, yes, that's ridiculous. Two weeks, if you really want to work here, which I think they both do, then I think they'll wait two weeks and come back.
I agree with that. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, and, and then again, I mean, I don't want this to sound as if I'm trying to get us to a certain point, but I am, I think that I'm sensitive to the fact that, like, for both of these candidates, now they're taking fire on all sides for, you know, from, I mean, for Marty from his district, from Neil, from, you know, his school community, good and bad. And so I guess, you know, the question that I have, or that I'd pose is like, or, the question I would pose is, are we willing to kind of let that, you know, them be affected by that for three weeks? Because realistically, I mean, it's, okay, two and a half weeks, and we have an important job to do, and I think that that kind of outweighs their feeling about that. But I think we do also have to have some sensitivity to the fact that it cannot be easy to be them right now and have your, you know, picture on the front page of the reminder, you know, and the On Mass Live, especially when.
And on Facebook.
And on Facebook. And, you know, obviously, as the superintendent of schools, you go through that on a daily basis, but, you know, I, I think it's a different sort of, it's a different sort of thing.
Sue, your hand was waving and then, oh, were you just stretching?
I think I might have been.
Michelle.
Should I just say, you know, I think the difference in right now is that school won't be in session, so we have, the reason why we have such a long time is because, you know, so they weren't be in their buildings, they weren't be, won't be around their staff.
I don't disagree with that, but that doesn't mean that community members still aren't fueling the fires on social media and phone calls and conversations at the grocery store within their communities.
And that's not Long Meadow community members. That's like, that's Hampden Wilbraham community members. That's, you know, that's everybody.
Well, and hopefully, maybe they'll be distracted by the holidays. I, you know, I just, I hope people have some things to do in the next.
Unfortunately, I, I would hope, but I'm not.
I mean, we know that it would give the community the chance to send us our, their thoughts, and I would hope that they would, and we already have heard from people today, but I think it would give people the opportunity that didn't feel like they had a chance to do anything to send their, their thoughts after today's meet and greet. Even if it was, even if this happened on the twenty-second, it still gives the community a few days.
Absolutely, and, and I agree. I have no problem with the twenty-second. I guess where I was going with, where I was trying to get to with the, the concept of site visit is that wouldn't take place until January, and then is that fair to them personally and professionally? Since that was not, yes, we reserve the right to do site visits. I don't disagree that that was in.
Every conversation we've ever had.
Every conversation that we've had. It's just, I guess, with the particular two candidates who it's come down to, being local and having ties in communities surrounding, I'm just more sensitive to that.
The problem is, I can't make the decision on who's going to run our district in two days. I just, I'm not going to vote on that.
Absolutely, I absolutely agree with that.
So, you know, I have three little girls in the system. I really just want to pick the best person to run it, and I just am not comfortable doing it now. So the site visits, you know, if we can do the twenty-second, and the site visits would be on the 4th, then maybe we shouldn't do that. But, you know, my guess is, we're going to hear that they want to have the full committee, and it should be on the 4th. If I was applying, I'd want you, all of you to vote on it, all of us.
If they were to come back and say that, is it realistic to ask them? Because I do agree, I would like, I, I, you know, when one person was going to be gone, but now it's two people, like, we've got a seven-person committee for a reason. I just, it is an important decision.
Sure.
But is it, is it, I don't know.
Sue, would you mind going checking up on Mr. Ray?
Did he get lost?
Can we, we, I don't, yeah, we don't need to.
Which way did he head?
He just stepped outside.
What car did he drive?
I think it was a rental.
Hopefully, it's not bad.
He went outside.
Is it raining?
I think he's having a snow break.
Well, I just.
Well, we're talking about a lot of ifs.
We keep talking in circles and what-ifs, and, you know, if both candidates are comfortable waiting till January 4th, that solves a lot of this.
Then we can stop laughing and go on.
So I went out, and you ran outside, so it's still minimal conversation with other.
Because they're all watching us right now.
Go interrupt him.
Janet, I think you should check on what Mark was referencing, or hurting the Collins. I think you're eligible to vote.
Mark, you think she's eligible to vote?
I don't have all of my.
She is. It's the issue of, you need a quorum in the chair to do remote.
What about the vice chair?
Wouldn't that be the acting chair?
Right.
The chair's absent. The vice chair steps in as chair.
Right.
But I think the rules change for remote participation, and I've got the whole printout. I just didn't bring it to my full committee.
I'm pretty sure you need a quorum, and then you need, without, let's see, you need a quorum without the person that's remote, and then you need the chair present, I, I believe.
But the chair's conceivably present remotely. That's.
No, well, I think the regulations.
Yeah, I think the regs are a little bit more.
I'm not positive, I mean, we should look at it.
But like I said, I have it all at home. I'm not, you know.
I don't want to suggest something that's potentially illegal in this case, but would it, would it make sense if one of the people present, what, if you were to temporarily step down and appoint somebody for those five days or whatever, and then that person could be present and you could participate remotely? And it doesn't have to be me. It could be Kim.
No, I've.
I think that, I don't know.
I think that would raise a lot of eyebrows, but, you know.
We're both in from, we're out of country. What if you're not in the same country? Is that even a possibility?
Well, that's what I was going to say, you know, I'm kind of six, seven-hour time difference, so.
Four, it's fine, it'd be the middle of the night.
I'm really not feeling like, you know, spending my vacation calling in to you guys at two in the morning. Sorry, no offense.
I don't want to talk to you at two in the morning either.
Should we, were there any other questions that members wanted to discuss? Or should we recess until we have an answer from Dr. Ray, or Mr. Ray? It was Dr. Rush.
Dr. Rush and Mr. Ray.
Any other que, I, I know we started with all of Kim's questions and concerns. No, 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 that's fine.
Should I find something though? Maybe we should just come up with questions now, so we don't have to say later.
Understand, and, and I'm sorry, Michelle, to cut you off, with, with coming up with questions now, it's all open session.
Right, but I mean, pull them back.
No, so, Michelle.
I, I will just add, in the minimum requirements for remote participation, it explains, a quorum of the body, including the chair, or in the chair's absence, the person authorized to chair the meeting shall be physically present at the meeting location.
All right, done.
So.
So we have.
May vote, oh, okay. May vote, oh, okay, members of public bodies who participate remotely may vote and shall not be deemed absent for the purposes of mass general law.
Just want to give a quick thanks to Mark Gold for allowing that.
But... That's... So that's saying that I could participate remotely.
Right, but you would chair the day.
But the reality of my participating remotely is...
That you want to?
No, but I'm saying, the reality is, so if you're having a meeting at 7:00, it's going to be 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning where I'm at. The chances of my participating remotely are...
Have John participate, so that would be six.
Correct, correct.
Or what if, I mean, so even if it's at... Well, if we met at 5:00 like we did today.
No, I mean, and it's fine. I said again...
Meet during the day.
Again, I will remove myself.
Meet at 5:00. That's 10:00. Meet at 4:00, that's earlier.
Why don't we talk about the questions?
Right. I mean, so you want to go on to... So are we looking at asking both candidates? I think Mr. Ray expressed somewhere that to ask several general questions for both of them and then add two to three specific? Or are we looking to change that and just target the specific?
I think any more general questions?
Yeah, no, I...
Can you have an informal kind of discussion and give and take with the candidate as opposed to having a, you know, going around? Because I know, you know, your gears start turning when they answer a question and you want to kind of follow up. But I know now that you all have some things that you want to discuss. Is it possible? I don't know, I mean, our attorneys look, listen. Can they have a meet and greet? Can you have a give and take conversation with a candidate? As opposed to a, I'm firing questions at you, I need your answer.
I would think as long as it's an open session, you could. But again, we're changing the entire process that we had outlined to these candidates, so they would have to agree to that. So right now, we've got him asking about would they be willing to be, come for a second round of interviews? And if they agreed to that, now we're going to, we'll lose him for another half hour, no offense, that while he calls back and says, "Hey, instead of a formal interview, would you be willing to have more of an informal give and take with board"?
I just think you're going to get better, better agent when you had that kind of situation. Where they're not sitting there being anxious about what are they going to ask me now? So if you can lead into a conversation and have some good give and takes and some feedback, you can ask follow-up questions. And I don't, I don't want to speak for you, but I don't think I'm a problem with that or more comfortable or something like that.
Is that what you were wanting, Michelle?
Still ask some of your formal questions.
I like Sue's suggestion a lot.
Well, it did go back, when they were asking us questions, that was a part of the...
I believe so.
Oh, well, let's have them come back.
They probably went home, took off their suits, be comfortable. All right.
Oh, so it's probably not... They probably had enough.
All right.
That's lousy service, I had to go outside.
All right, so what did you find out?
Yeah, I see a lot of my paper in the other room, but the both can do it to 22nd. Marty said he would, he would like to do it as early as possible on 22nd. He has a, he has a committee meeting, so he, he's not going to move his meeting to say, "By the way, I'm going to interview for another job." I'm going to move that, so that's not going to go down. He is telling me that he'd like to do it, and I told them both, I said, "We're just going to have two or three questions and maybe a couple of general ones. Hopefully, we can do it in a half hour or so." And so the, he told me it takes about 20 minutes, you know, for him to get from here to, you know, where he's at. And so we would probably have to do it fairly early to 22nd, you know, to get it, maybe 6:00 or 6:30 or something.
Well, like a 4:00 or 5:00?
Yeah, that would be better even for him. He did ask me about the site visit, he wanted some clarification on that, you know, on Nick. And he asked me, you know, "How long do we normally have those"? You know, I, we normally don't do that. I haven't had a site visit probably in five, six years, maybe seven. And so if you want to do those, you, you know, we're going to have to specifically, he's going to want to know what that's going to all entail. And you can understand when the candidate is already a sitting superintendent and then having people come in their district, you know, they want to, he wants to make sure where he, wants to have a pretty good idea where he stands at and what you want. And obviously, the 22nd is when you're going to have to clarify that, you know, with him. When I talked to Neil, Neil was kind of surprised. I mean, he was kind of surprised that we're going to do, you know, some more conversation. And, but he's all right on 22nd as well.
Did you ask them if they prefer the 22nd over waiting till January 4th?
I think the 22nd is, you know...
Is what they...
Is what they prefer, you know, to have, you know, have it over. And again, you know, I, I think when, when we're moving the process out, that, that's, you know, you get hesitation by candidate's voice. And I can tell you, there's some hesitation in both. You know, yeah, in both. Just because I think that, you know, they, we're hoping that tonight we can move forward. And it's just a matter of, I'm going to caution you as, you know, you should be making a decision on the 22nd. I think you go beyond that 22nd, I think, you know, you're, you're going down a path that, that you probably really don't want to go down. And it's, it's just human nature. And after tonight, you know, I know people sleep overnight and who knows what, you know, might take place. So I, I just want to be upfront with you.
So can we, as a, I mean, are we, I know, John, you're away, I know that Janet, you're away, being sensitive to the fact that you are going to be in Europe and it is six hours ahead. What is the earliest that everybody can meet if that's, if we're choosing to do this, which obviously it seems like we are?
I could do middle of the day.
Yeah, me too.
What, like, what's your middle of the day? What do you say when you...
Noon, 12:30?
Mm-hmm. I could do noon.
Liz?
I worked until 2:00, I'll take half day.
I can also do 2:00.
Well, we could do 2:00.
Or 2:30. I can do both of those.
That's like 8:00 for you, if you choose to go.
It's your world clock app up there.
No, I got fingers.
Michelle?
I would prefer something after 2:30.
2:30.
2:30? Does that work for you?
That's fine, but can I just request that we try to make a tour? Because I have my whole family staying with me and at my house, so... See how it is.
All right, are you, are you able to be available on Tuesday? I mean, I know you're on vacation and, but for the purposes of your remote participation. And John, the same question goes for you.
I, I can't make you promises. I'm going to be very honest with you. You know, I devote my time to this, I take this very seriously, I take being chair very But the fact that I'm going to be on vacation, I understand that this is the biggest job that, that the school committee does, but I've had this scheduled out for months and I, I don't want to promise making a commitment that I may not follow through on.
Sure, okay. And what about for you?
Well, that presents the community with a decision that will be made by a five-person committee rather than a seven-person committee. So are you all prepared to live with that? This certainly is going to cripple whoever the superintendent is. We've shown that this committee cannot follow an agenda, cannot follow a process, and caving into some community pressure is, is the way to go in this town. This nomination is not going to be worth very much. I hope you're prepared to live with that.
Okay, that's...
Maybe that's what some people want.
And, and that's your feeling, John, but the committee as a whole, as seven members, five members are saying that they wish to get more information, you know, and, and have more discussion with the two candidates. Russ?
So I want to make it clear, what I'm doing is trying to make the best decision for the district, not caving to the public.
Me too.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I think that there's always room for change in process and especially when you are trying to pick the person that is going to lead this district for the next, we have no idea how many years, if there are some questions that need to be answered, I think that we have a right to get those answers. And we have not, we're not excluding anyone. It is still two days before the holiday. It is a school day. It's a work day. It's not like we're asking people to come back on a, on a holiday. And we're offering remote participation for the two candidates, the two...
Committee members.
Committee members that are not going to be in town. So I don't feel that's unreasonable.
Ma'am Chair, can I ask, just from a process standpoint here?
Yes.
Who knows what you guys came up when I was gone here, so, you know...
Well, we went through pages of notes while you were gone. What can I help inform you of?
Well, yeah, number, number one is that, is it possible, is it any way possible that two of you can participate or vote?
Yes. Yes, it is determined that we could participate remotely if we so choose to. The question was, you know, knowing that we're meeting at 2:30, which is 8:30 where I'm going to be, you know, am I willing to participate remotely? And, and as I said, I'm not trying to be stubborn, I'm not trying to be, you know...
But you don't know where you're going to be.
Dragging this process down. On that day, I don't know where I'm going to be at that time and I don't want to promise something I can't fulfill.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and, and if you could, obviously, it's best because anybody's being hired, you know, they would like to have everybody participate. And I don't know whether it's even possible, I've, I've had this question and I've had this situation before, where someone, if, before they left, if they reread the materials, they were able to have their vote. And so I, I'm not saying you can do that, but I'm just saying...
No, and I understand that. And, you know, regrettably, the timing of this just is how it is. I'm not trying to get out of participating in this process. You know, I've spent a lot of time and effort on this since the announcement was made in June and, but...
Well, you can think, you can think about that, obviously, but...
But I, you know, but I certainly respect...
I mean, what I heard is if you can, you will.
If I can, I will, yes.
Okay, the other process, you know, thing that I would like to ask is that you mentioned something about having some of the administrators meet during that time.
That was decided against.
Okay. I think that's probably a good idea, where they had a chance to, you know, be here. And that will also put those folks maybe in an awkward, as well as you, in a tough position. So...
And then the, the other question was about site visits and now that's, the committee had indicated that they wanted to do site visits and they wanted to do them on January 4th, but I said, you know, "We need information from you as to, would they reconsider that based upon the response from the candidates"? So...
Yeah, I, I could tell you at least one candidate is a little concerned, very much concerned, so that, there may be some questions and I'm, I'm supposed to try to give, give him some thoughts on that as far as how that process would work and who would be coming. You can imagine, I mean, if, you know, they're a sitting person, that they would have some, some concern if you go offsite versus stay onsite.
Right. So I'll pose that back to the committee. With hearing, you know, what Mr. Ray is reporting on his conversation with both candidates, how do you wish to proceed with site visits?
Well, I think we'd have to do it on the 22nd if we did it. Then obviously, earlier in the day.
Any other commentary from those present who will be here on the 22nd on how they feel about that, how that's going to work?
I am in favor of site visits, but I don't know if on that day I can do one, so... Well, we'd have to do, well, one, right? But you want to do two, you want to do both?
I would, but that morning, I'm actually, I have, my daughter has a doctor's appointment with a specialist, so I can't really, I can't change that one.
You can just say that. Yeah, no, I...
They're usually not so-so long, a couple hours.
But I was going to ask what, what a site visit, how long a site visit lasts?
They're usually not very long, it depends on, what, what usually happens, you identify who you'd like to, you know, chat with, whether it's a staff member or former board members or whatever, and, and the candidate, well, we'll go ahead and line that up because if, you know, for those people to get, make themselves available on the other end, you know, they, you're working with some other folks that could care less whether, whether this process works, you know, they're, they're probably saying, "Well, we prefer it wouldn't". So, you know, so you got to be careful where you're at.
Michelle?
I, I said I wasn't available, but I would be in favor of sending three people if there were three people available. I guess I just want to clarify that, that, you know, and then they could bring the information to us at the meeting and say, you know, give us the feedback similar to how we did with references or something.
Right, so I have that you're not available, Russ is not available.
Well, I could do, I could do 12 to 2:00, if it's only two hours, I could do that.
That's January 4th?
No.
No. December 22nd? Is that even realistic?
January 22nd?
No, December.
Oh, December? Sorry, I wasn't part of yours.
I mean, it's really, oh, shay on that day. I mean, if we wanted to go wolf swamp, that's a...
We'll go tomorrow.
Well, now it still needs to be organized of who we're, who everyone is wanting to meet with.
No, but it doesn't have to be, what I'm saying is it doesn't have to be...
It's more accessible, is what I'm...
What I'm saying is it doesn't have to be the 22nd, though. We could do Monday or we could do tomorrow.
Right. Under four, if there's only like...
Well, if we're only sending three, then we don't...
Then we could go at the convenience...
And we're not designating a subcommittee, then we can just send three people and ask them to report back.
And that would be on the 22nd, your interview and one of, you know, the candidates on 22nd?
Yep.
As well.
We think.
Ideally.
That's still being discussed. Liz?
Trying to figure this out.
You're not available during the day.
Tomorrow.
All right, so Liz is not available on the, during the day on the 22nd. Michael?
If I need to make myself available, I can try to do that.
Kim?
I could try to do that between 12:00 and 2:00.
Well, if we do, if we do 12:00 to 2:00 and then we come for, we meet at 2:30 to, to do whatever final questions we have, I, I mean, I think we can make that, I can make that work.
So you're only doing site visits for one candidate?
I mean, that's what it sounds like.
Unless we do something on the 21st.
Yeah, can we do the 21st with Neil?
I'm, I'm not available the 21st, but if somebody else is, then...
I think you're going to have to do your site visit probably after the interview or, you know, that same day because normally they're done after, you know, the interview, but you can do it before, I guess, if, if the same day. It's a couple of days ahead of time.
I think so, we're trying to schedule.
Do you think, is it sound reasonable to do a site visit for one candidate on the 21st, a site visit for the second candidate on the 22nd at, say, noon to 2:00, and then have interviews at 2:30 on the 22nd?
I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, you could probably make that work.
You want to get from there to here?
The problem you have on site visits is norm, normally when a board makes a site visit, they're making it to one candidate for what they're going to choose, you know, and you, you folks, and I heard what Russ said, but I don't necessarily agree with that, that's in our process. No, no, nothing against Russ on, on that part of it, but, you know, because when you're a sitting superintendent, you want to know whether you got the job or not, or if you're going to be there, you know, and now you're kind of saying, "Okay, we're going to do